August 22, 2023. I'm filling in as chair tonight. My name is Brian Riddell and typically the vice chair. To my left is Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chan, and Mr. (I'm sorry, Charlie). Mr. O'Brien. I know, but I just had a completely lack of brain movement there. Mr. O'Brien, our clerk.
Mr. Charlie.
I almost just called you Norrie. I'm really losing it tonight. And our director of inspectional services, Mr. Conlon. We only are going to have four members here this evening. So that means you'd need a unanimous vote out of the four of us. So we'll give you, when we call you up, we'll give you the opportunity to come in front of us and make a case. But again, you'd need 100% unanimous vote. If any one of us were to vote in the other way, it would be shut down. So you will have your choice to come back or you will have your choice to present. I'd also like to say I spoke to the chairman today and he wanted me to iterate. It seems that during COVID, for some reason, we stopped approving our minutes, gentlemen. So he wanted me to apologize for that oversight, for missing that, that we've just been doing it for the last three years without even, or it feels like three years without even realizing. But this must have happened sometime during COVID when we were doing Zoom meetings, that we forgot to keep approving our minutes. So I'd like to make a motion first to waive the reading of the minutes from the previous hearing.
Second.
And then I'd also like to make a motion to approve the minutes from previous hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Couple cases we're going to move to start. ZBA 2338, JCBT Architect. They've requested a continuance. I'd like to request the October 24 date. Want to make a motion, John?
Make a motion to continue. ZBA 2338, JBC Architect, Reverend's Building Two and a Half Story Side Addition with a Two Car Garage on the Basement Level, Premises Numbered 28, Fernus Brook Parkway, Quincy, and make a motion to continue it to 10/28?
10/24.
10/24, 23.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Also, ZBA 23-51, Patrick Foley, Reverend's. We're going to move that to September 12.
Make a motion to move ZBA 2351, Patrick Foley, Reverend's, to raise the roof line existing three-family homes and increase the living area, the premises numbered 166 F, Quincy, Mass. to September 12, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Under all business, ZBA 23-46, Jason Cole, Reverend's, and finding to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct two townhouses with parking under each unit for one vehicle on the premise number 1247 C Street, Quincy. Is the applicant or the representative here? We didn't get updated plans, did we?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll put that on hold for a minute. We'll come back at the end if they show up. If not, we can move it. ZBA 20, new business, ZBA 23-56, Neil Johnson, Reverend's, to construct a garage addition in the existing driveway with a car lift and expand the front bedroom over the garage on the premise number 72, South Bayfield Road, Quincy. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Right here.
How are you, Mr. Johnson?
Good.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Neil Johnson, deserve as a swearing.
Yeah, we'll do that in a second. Just straight ahead.
Neil Johnson, 72 South Bayfield.
Computer also you want to handle swearing everyone in?
Yeah.
If you're going to testify tonight, anyone in the audience going to testify tonight, would you stand, take the oath that you'll tell the truth during the hearing? Anyone who's going to testify pro gone against only three, four people going to speak tonight? If you're going to talk it out, if you're going to speak it out. You have a way to tell the truth, not the truth, there's nothing but the truth and the matter is now in hearing.
I do.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Mr. Johnson, you understand what I said earlier, there's only four of us, so you'd need a unanimous consent. Do you want to go forward to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, tell us what you're trying to do.
So I'll be building a garage for my classic car. I'm over the line by .4 tenths, so I'm here for a variance.
On the left side?
Nope, the front along the street. The left side, the setback is 13 feet in my residence area and I have an additional 12 feet over there.
Okay.
The setback in the rear is 20 feet and then I have an additional 14 feet on that. The problem is my house is cocked, sorry, not parallel to the street. So when I extend the front of the house out, I am 4 tenths over the 9.1 feet that I'm allowed per section 3.451B and I'm performing a lot with the extension.
Okay.
So I'm here for a variance for 4 tenths of a feet too close to the street. I know I have a couple neighbors in the back that are concerned about the project, but I am all the way forward and I can build 14 feet closer to them, two and a half stories, 35 feet in the green box, so I'm doing everybody a favor by doing as far forward as possible.
Does that give you any parking in front of your?
Nope, I have, there's going to be four spots in the garage on the left and I have an additional spot on the outside.
Okay.
There's eight feet if I want to parallel park the car in the front.
That's what I thought when I drove by.
If I wanted to, yes.
And what's your height on that total? Looks like it's like probably 26 now.
So the first floor is going to be 14 feet, the second floor is going to be eight, so that is 22 plus a foot and a foot for rafters, so I'm under the 35.
Yeah, yeah, it just looked like, I saw what you're trying to try.
It's going to be about three or four feet a peak, a inch to the existing peak and maybe a few inches up and down, but I'm well.
So still well under 30 even, yeah.
Yes.
So that's what I thought as well. Are you doing anything to the existing roof line on your existing home?
No, I wish I had the money to redo it, so I agree this roof line, you better see.
I saw.
Maybe it's on future point I can extend the front through the opposite pitch or something, but right now I'm looking toward half the house.
Okay. And you're keeping the shed that's there?
Yeah, it's actually a pool house, all my pool equipment's in there, so none of my neighbors have to listen to the pump and filter and all that stuff.
Okay, okay.
And then I put all the pool furniture in there.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions. I'm good at this point. No, no questions.
You all set for now?
Yeah.
Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Any correspondence? We've reviewed this middle for the above restaurant project and have no comments. Anyone want to, I have a number of correspondence here, so if you're here to speak in opposition, what I will do is we'll pull out the correspondence because you're obviously here to speak, so we'll read these at the end. Is anyone here opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Do you want to come up and state? If you, if you submitted something, I'm going to read those in too. It's just, I don't want to do what gets after.
I'm part of, I'm part of a petition.
Yeah, yeah, there's a petition here as well, so.
If that's written out, then I'm.
Yeah, if you just want to state that you're opposed and come up, okay, then, I mean, we're going to read those in anyway, so. So as far as, there's a, there's a petition here with 22 names on it and there's some letters.
What was going to be written to record with the address?
Yeah, we can read them in if you'd, if you'd like. This is from Barbara Quinn on 71 North Bayfield. I've been a longtime resident of 71 North Bayfield, recently received a zoning board notice that I vehemently oppose Neil Johnson made a variance request to construct a garage addition in the existing driveway. Front setback should be 25 feet and he's seeking nine feet, which is complete violation and frankly absurd. Additionally, the structure would be obtusive and would not fit the character of a great neighborhood and block sunlight and airflow. This is from Susan McPherson at 94 South Bayfield. I'm writing in response to notification. I do not think this variance should be granted. It's out of character with the neighborhood. It would make an already densely populated lot look more dense, reducing the little open space that remains. I'm a new homeowner and contractor, the owner was aware of building limitations when the property was purchased, so this will not create an unexpected hardship. Again, my recommendation is to not approve this variance. This is for a different case, I think. Yeah. That's Topman, sorry. Do we normally read these in? We normally just put them in file? It's up to you if you want them read in.
Well, I think if people are going to make a comment, they could have sent an email instead of signing petitions, so if it's going to be part of the record, I think the name of the address should be stated.
That's fine, I'll try my best to read everyone's name, man.
You're going to read what the petition says because I have no other people's.
Yep, yep. So we are the undersigned, concerned neighbors of North and South Bayfield oppose the variance request by Neil Johnson to construct a garage addition in the existing driveway with a car lift and expand the front bedroom over the garage. There's no additional information, it's just your variance request. Barbara Quinn, she was already on there. Looks like Salvatore Venzia, 62 North Bayfield, Arthur Sanders, 60 North Bayfield, Jeff Lindley, 55 North Bayfield, Kathleen Powers, 40, or Kathleen Powers, Jeruso, 47 North, or Bayfield North, North Bayfield. I can't read this name, but it's 47 North Bayfield. Karen McRitchell, McVeigh, 39 North Bayfield, Aaron Leary, 39 North Bayfield, Andrew Stell, 65 North Bayfield, Rita McHughes, 76 South Bayfield, Jack McView, 76 North Bayfield, Kelly McVeigh, 39 North Bayfield, Xena Venzia, 68 North Bayfield, Stephen Tazka, 50 South Bayfield. Again, I can't read this name, it looks like 87 North Bayfield or South Bayfield, I can't read. Heidi Moriarty, 89 North Bayfield, John Clancia, 66 South Bayfield, Sue Gregory, 79 North Bayfield, Steve Walk, 84 North Bayfield, Cynthia Andrews Skov, 76 South Bay, North Bayfield, Caitlin Gerber, 42 North Bayfield, and Suzanne Cosgrove, 29 South Bayfield. Comments, what do you guys?
Seems like there's a substantial petition for the neighbors and they're negative on this one.
I have a question. Is it 10 feet the front setback for a structure that's not, that's attached to your house or is it 25?
25.
It's 25, I don't know.
Can I, can I speak here?
I, I, I'll give you a chance in a second, all right? That's what I thought, I thought it was 25. Is there a discrepancy that we're like, is that for like a different structure or something that he might be referencing with like 10 feet?
I'm not registering at least that discuss.
Okay.
I'm just saying it can't be more than what it already is.
Oh, okay, so you're saying you, you stayed on the existing line there?
Whatever the existing is, I can't be more under 3.451B if you guys want to look it up.
Is that the case when you extend out, like if you were, but it's still nonconforming, so you.
It's still conforming, you're extending it on the form of the commission or something.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what we're, we're proven is the extension on the nonconformity. So when they reference 25 feet in that, that would be if we had new build or, yeah. All right, that's what I thought, that's what I was, I was confusing as to how they were saying or who had given 25. So it, so any extension of, we're good on that. Do you have any comments besides, sorry, I mean, it's John, go ahead.
Question on the parking, here, question mark on the parking too. The coordinates requirements, looks like you have two existing and then two.
So currently I have two existing. I had tried to do more when I applied the permit, but the city of Quincy limits you to 20 feet wide, so there's, there's not much room. So I am going from two spots now to five spots, which is actually making it inconformant with the regulations. And there's not, no, I know commercial parking structures have a ban against lifts, but residential ones do not in the zoning regulations.
Lifts, you mean, so you're going to have two cars?
Yes, correct.
Talking about.
I have a classic car that I don't drive all the time, that I'm paying in a garage right now and I just want to store it at the house.
I understand.
So it's going to stay up, you know, 90% of the time, my wife will park under it, I'll still park outside. So there's only going to be three cars, even though there's five spots.
Okay.
There's only three of us that live at the house.
I understand.
And then the upstairs, there's currently three bedrooms and there will still be three bedrooms, just the front bedroom is going to get much larger with a sitting area and a bedroom part. But it's still three bedrooms, it's all connected, no door.
So the bedroom in the garage on the second level is going to be connected to a bedroom that's already.
Correct, yes, because the way the hallway is, you have to go through that bedroom to get to the other one, so I'm going to make it a sitting area and then the bedroom is going to be over the garage.
Okay.
So it'll still be three bedrooms, we're going to increase in the bedrooms.
Okay. Any questions?
The only comment I have is that the addition aligns up with the existing house.
Yeah.
Is that?
That's what, that's what it needs to be, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm coming for a variance, because if I, if I, I guess I could build the house out of square and meet the setbacks, but I think it would look stupid. So I wanted to build it straight, which puts me 4 tenths over the line, just because the way Bayfield is, it's teardrop shaped, so all the houses get smaller as you get away from the beach. So, you know, I have even more on this side, it's like nine and a half feet, 91, and then it goes to 87 just the way all the lots are.
So you stay off the street the same distance there?
Basically, yeah.
Brian, there's a question you had that if he puts a new structure on and nonconforming, does it, does he get to adopt the nonconforming versus going to the current code?
Yeah, that's basically what I was saying, yeah, so that's what he's doing, you know, he doesn't have to go to 25.
He doesn't have to go to the current code, if, even though it's a new.
So you guys, under the code, horizontal extensions are allowed. And one of the things here under the B part, it says the proposed extension does not approach any further forward in the required front yard, which I would be 9.1 is my minimum and I am asking for 8.7, so I am in violations 0.4 feet, so.
Yeah, I understand that, so the, how much you need to go up, I'll just question.
But that other table, I believe, is for new construction. This house has been here since 1920.
I mean, the garage is new construction.
It's going to be part of the house.
I know, it's new construction.
It's an addition, horizontal extension.
I'm all set. Thank you, never seen.
Thank you. Happy to see you though, I have pictures, there's sunlight at full time in the backyard here. This is at 7:00 AM, I know one of the neighbors, Barbara, that started a petition complaint. At 7:00 AM, you can see the pool in my backyard has some, at 8 o'clock, there's sun, at 10:30, there's still sun, that's her fence in the back there. 11:50, there's still sun, it's 2:15, there's still sun, 4:48, there's still sun, and I think that's it, there's a sun sets. So I am not blocking anybody's sunlight. Thank you.
I mean, I know there's a lot of neighborhood opposition, I don't, I don't know what you did to the neighbors. Because it doesn't, to me, it's, it's, it's not an obscene request, I mean, I think the only thing I could think of that I would have rather seen would be it pushed back a little bit, but I don't know that that would make a difference. I don't know that you're still going to park, if he's still using the parking for his own vehicle to let, adjacent to the structure, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, I just, I, I, I don't see, it's a modest height, it's only.
No height, no problem.
Yeah, it's only, you know, of living space, it's not even 500 square feet of living space inside, you know? So I don't know if you have any thoughts.
Was it with councilor meeting rooms? No councilor meeting? Was there, was there any neighborhood meeting?
Mr. Harris, and I've asked for comments back and I never received any comments back.
Okay, I know, he, he did just forward the emails, right? He didn't, did he add any? I didn't even notice that, sorry. My council said he hadn't received any notice from the builder or resident appearing in front of the zoning board and that application requires notification, I want to put in the record for it. For when they appear in front of the ZBA for the record, this email, please put on the record. Also, Ms. Ms. Quinn, so, I have not received any notice from the builder or resident, that's what he, he was saying, he never, he never received any notification from you.
I have emails, if you guys do see them.
That's all right, well, we, we can talk about them in a second, so, I mean, is that something we'd rather see and see if they can work out some differences here or? I, I, it seems like there's probably not like a reasonable.
Not for 4 tenths. That's what I mean, what I gotta say. Take the 4 tenths away and set it backwards.
Yeah, you're going to set it back, you know, that's, that's truly all it's going to be, right?
One of the comments in the petition was that it was a 25-foot ordinance, but he'd misunderstood the reading of it if it's, if it's an adjacent building according to.
Is that correct, if it's adjacent?
It's just nonconforming.
Yeah.
If it wasn't coming from the forward, we'd find it because it's coming from the forward in various.
Because he's coming forward half. Yeah. So that's what you'd get, you'd get a finding on that, yeah.
It would just be a finding, it would be a. Finding conformant.
Yeah. I mean, based on all those things, I, I, I just, I'm, I see that, I understand neighborhood opposition and I understand that, you know, people think it might look out of character, I think, I think, I drove by the property a few times and every time it was kept really nice and, you know. So that being said, I'm going to be in favor this one.
Yeah, I also misunderstood the 10 feet of 25 feet, so having been clarified by building, I could be, I could vote for it as well.
I'm in favor.
Yeah, I'm in favor. Want to make a motion, John?
ZBA 23-56, Neil Johnson, Reverend's, to construct a garage additions in existing driveway with a car lift and expand the front bedroom over the garage on the premises number 72 South Bayfield Road, Quincy. We make a motion to accept this presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? ZBA 23-58, Edward Fleming Esquire, Reverend's, to remove the existing commercial structure and construct a 32-unit residential building on the premise number 21 Topman Street, Quincy. Council, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the record, my name is Edward Fleming, I'm here with Mr. Sean Galvin and Mr. James Burke from DeSalle Burke &amp; Sala Engineering. Just for purposes of clearing the record, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not the applicant, although I know that that's how it reads, the applicant is actually Galvin Development Company, just for future reference. As I said, I represent.
Thanks, sorry.
As I said, I'm here representing Galvin Development Company. Galvin Development is the owner of the property at 21 Topman Street, which is a 27,625 square foot parcel. Topman Street's right off Center Street near the, and essentially, which abuts the Crown Colony Business Development. The site is actually zoned industrial A, as, as that entire area is, zoned industrial A. And that area, as you may be aware, was the subject of a new zoning ordinance that recently was enacted by the city, whereby the city rezoned a large portion of this area, certainly on Center Street and a lot of the area that actually abuts Mr. Galvin's property, from industrial A to the Center Street Transit Oriented Development Area. That, that new zoning district actually changed the zoning in that residential is now allowed in that particular area. And I believe that you were a party to a matter that was this 325 or 345 unit residential development, or maybe the, it was just the planning board that acted on that. But there was a large development that was proposed in that area. And although that area in the past had been very industrial in its character, over the years, new residential has been built there. In fact, Mr. Galvin, when he built the office building at this site back in 2021, also constructed a number of new single-family houses right on Topman Street at that same time. So that industrial categorization of that particular area really has changed over the years. Mr. Galvin, however, in, in 2021, actually, 2000, was it 2001? 2001, constructed this building actually on behalf of a company that was going to utilize this not only for office, but also for warehouse space. He was a manufacturer of a particular product that needed a lot of warehouse space and as such, the building was designed and the parking was designed to kind of meet the needs of that particular tenant, whereby there would be mostly warehouse space and therefore a very limited need for parking. That's caused, but, and, but due to market circumstances and issues that came about with that particular company, that company never took title to the property and the Galvins ended up keep holding on to that and keeping that in their, in their real estate portfolio and needed to lease this property to, to office tenants. And they did so from 2001 until present. However, because the building wasn't really constructed for a standard office use, this, the office users that have occupied the property have, have been difficult to maintain and they've also caused some level of parking concern in the neighborhood, whereby the lots have been filled and parking has kind of filtered out into the street. So as a result, and as a result of some other changes and certainly the changing character of the neighborhood, the Galvins have decided that they would like to redevelop this property, converted from an office use now to a residential use, which is much more in character with the, with the area as it's been changing. And certainly in light of the changes that will be brought about by Atlantic Development, just one, one street over, where they're going to build a 325 unit residential development. So we believe that this new residential use is much, much better for the site and much more appropriate for the site. So the proposal that's before you tonight is a 32-unit residential building with 27 parking spaces under the building. So the parking will actually dramatically increase by providing 27 parking spaces under the building and then another 22 surface spaces for a total of 49 parking spaces or 1.53 spaces per unit. The site will, new drainage controls have been designed by DeSalle Burke &amp; Sala Engineering that will be described in more detail by Mr. Burke. And additional landscaping features will be added to the site. The, the Galvins have always done a very good job with maintaining the landscaping at the site and will continue to do so here, so that it, it really fits in within the neighborhood. We look at this too as kind of a transitionary area, whereas Center Street is a much busier, busy traveled corridor, there'll be, and there's been more industrial and more commercial style uses out there. And this will be a kind of a buffer to the smaller residential on Topman Street whereby a new, a smaller multifamily of 32 units will fit between those two sites. It's a better use, we believe, than combining this with other sites in the area and then creating a much larger 300-plus unit development, as was done in the neighboring area across the street or that next, next door. We're seeking relief, in twofold relief, really, the majority of the relief that we're seeking because when this zoning district was enacted, certain, certain sections of the area were not included within the zoning category, despite the fact that this, this, this property is, is located adjacent to that zoning, that new zoning district. And because of that, this particular site has remained industrial A zoning and it requires a use variance to allow for residential. So we're seeking a use variance to allow for the residential use that's being proposed tonight. And although industrial A doesn't have dimensional requirements that are specifically related to residential, it does have certain dimensional requirements that, that are, that are referenced, including setback requirements of 25 feet and we're therefore requesting relief from the setback requirements. This building, however, will not be setback any less than what's, what's, what's the office building that sits there today and we think that this will be really in, very compatible with the, with the existing area and the new changes of the zoning district. So that's our presentation. Mr. Galvin's here can talk a lot more in detail about the particular reasons for the change, so that you understand that better if you feel that's important to understand. And Mr. Burke is here to talk about engineering. So, John, if you want to, if you want to add anything before I turn it over to Jim?
Good evening, everybody. Sean Galvin, 31 Beverly Street. We're proposing to redevelop the site for a couple of reasons and the primary reason is that the office market's gone soft. We've lost our major anchor tenant for the building and three quarters of the building is vacant. And if you followed, if you followed the market at all, you know that commercial real estate is not something everyone's hoping to build right now. So we've got a, almost three-quarter acre piece of property in a very desirable neighborhood, neighborhood we're very familiar with, we've been involved in the neighborhood for over 24 years. And with two things oncoming, one, the fact that the building is, is emptying out, the second being the TOD zoning change mandate coming down from the state. And we had conversations with the planning department and I think you received a letter from Chip Fatsis, the planning director, in regard to this? Have you guys? you guys got that? Uh, I'd ask you to read that later if you would. Um, which basically gave the city until the end of the year, uh, to create a new TOD zoning district, and they've, they've proposed, and it's been accepted by the state, um, a, an area that circles T Station, that's about a half hour, half mile in, in, uh, radius, uh, which includes this site. There are only maybe a half dozen actual lot sites large enough to create any multifamily, uh, residential within this zone, which is the mandate coming down from the state. Yeah, we can spin that around. Um, and the city has identified them on their application, so, there's the MBTA station in the center, and this is the, uh, the graphic that they created to indicate where they would rezon, and allow for residence zoning, multi-residents, um, and that's a by right, that's an application to the planning board for site plan review, uh, in which residents would be allowed. Uh, the blue parcel is our parcel, and that's squarely within, uh, that area. So by the end of the year, it's perfunctory that it's going to be residence, uh, multi-residential anyway. Um, we're a little bit ahead of the curve, uh, we wanted to come in with a project, uh, we spent, uh, several meetings working with the planning department to make sure that, um, the, the density, uh, and the, the use is appropriate for, uh, a future plan under the TOD zoning. Uh, and, uh, had a couple of meetings with the, uh, the planning director, the deputy planning director, and, uh, we've talked to all of the city departments in regard to the project. Uh, they've, uh, the, as you know, the planning department hires a peer review consultant, uh, to review our consultants, uh, which they have done, um, we've, uh, received comments from them, we've responded to comments, they've provided comments back, and we've responded to those, and I think, um, we're just almost across the finish line in terms of the minor details on all the technical items that go into the project such as this. Um, one of those things we were asked to do was to hire a, a consultant for traffic, so we commissioned a traffic study. Um, in doing that, uh, they, the, uh, planning department referred us to, to T-PAL, to the, uh, traffic engineer, and, uh, she requested that we take the compiled information that was already existing for the approved 340 units, which by the way is this parcel here, it's a multi-brand site. So, uh, in addition to doing the current study, they wanted us to add into our study the proposed traffic created by, uh, that new project. Um, net-net, the end of the day, we'll provide, we will produce about 140 less trips per day, uh, than is currently, uh, produced by the office building, um, which makes sense, the office building has got six doctors who, you know, book every 15, double every 15 minutes, uh, of people coming in and out, uh, will be pride behind it. These are ownership units, too, these condominiums, these are not apartments, so these are people that'll live in these units, uh, we anticipate many of them will work from home, many of them will walk to the T. Um, so in terms of, uh, parking for this project, we think we've overparked it at one and a half spaces per unit, but we've also tried to make sure that we've parked some of those inside and allowed some of those outside, so that we can accommodate, um, a real number of guests, uh, should they show up, they'd have, uh, parking available in the outside lot. We've tried to think of all of the details that would affect, um, residential, multi-residential building like that, this that abuts, um, single and multi-residential, uh, uh, neighborhoods. We've done this successfully throughout the city, um, always being a buffer between commercial, industrial, and major roadways, and one, two, and three-family housing. Uh, this is the type of project we think fits in that neighborhood, uh, building code would allow us to go, uh, six, uh, five stories over two stories of podium, we've opted just to go the four stories and put the garage fully under the ground, trying to be sensitive to the height as we transition from the single-family neighborhood into the commercial area. Uh, the building itself, we've set back almost equally to the building that is currently there, um, the idea being is that we wouldn't be approaching any further into the neighbors, into the residential neighbors. Um, the roadway that abuts the rear of the property is Rodman Street, um, it's not an improved way, we have no intention of improving it or using it for access, it provides access to two commercial sites, the, uh, the auto body shop and the contractor next door, uh, inappropriately so, I don't think that should be used for residential access. Uh, so that, that's basically, uh, the project itself, we, again, we've tried to be sensitive to all of the details that go into this, I think there needs to be an understanding that this is being rezoned, and, uh, developers will be looking at these large parcels for more 300 and 400 unit types of projects. Uh, we think 32 units is appropriate and a good buffer, and, um, be glad to answer any further questions if you have.
Mr. Galvin, you made reference, I, I just heard this the other day, in, so the state is requiring any city or municipality with a T Station to pursue projects such as this with, with more density, or they're gonna withhold state funds, is that what the, you've said at this point?
So, yeah, yeah, that's basically it. So if you read the, um, the planning director's letter, he refers to the ordinance and the state statute, um, that, uh, gives you, uh, the, the parameters, the general parameters of what, and, and this is, this is not you might, or you could, or you should, this is you are going to, as a city or municipality who benefits because of the massive, because of the transit system, uh, you're gonna create this area somewhere in your city, and this is the, the more natural place to choose, because you've already got too much density at Quincy Center Station, North Quincy's just been built out.
Yeah.
Uh, so they chose this area, um, and it's been, it's already been, this has been an ongoing thing, it's, I'm surprised it hasn't been in the news more, uh, but this is an ongoing thing, and it's been approved, it's been signed by the governor, and it's been mandated down to the cities. And, uh, basically, every city has responded and applied that was required, except the town of Holden, which for some reason thinks they don't have to, and they're, they're, they're trying to rebut, but.
Holden, their town.
More, more than likely, uh, it's not gonna happen. Uh, so this is, this is as much the city of Quincy's, uh, proposal, and us fitting our project into that, that type of zone.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the clarity.
And we have had a hearing before, the, the, um, the planning board to date, and through the assistance of Jim Devine, the city council of Ward 4, we had an opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting, I know some of the neighbors are here tonight, and their primary issue of concern that they raised was traffic in the area, not understanding completely the traffic information that had been collected to date, and, and what we wanted to do is be able to share that we had done that traffic study, that that traffic study had been reviewed by not only by the city's traffic engineer, but, but also by the peer review engineer. And, um, and to date, I believe, the comments from the, the, um, city's traffic engineer have really been minimal, she's not overly concerned, now that she's obtained the information that she saw. So, uh.
Anything on the, uh, the front of, I, I know we didn't really get into the site, is there anything on the front of the street, or is it just open access into the parking lot, are you doing, like, any type of fencing out front there, or anything?
So, so, um, uh, one of the things that was requested of us, because, again, um, focusing on that this is a transit-oriented development, and access to the T Station is part of the selling point for this project, what we'd be great to do is build a sidewalk from this project all the way up Topman Street.
Okay.
To Center Street, uh, with the necessary handicap ramps and, uh, and grade adjustments. Uh, the, uh, uh, the front of the building has a slight elevation, uh, change from the back of the sidewalk.
I saw that.
To the parking lot itself. Um, currently, the, the building has a stone wall, uh, in front of it, and we will hopefully reproduce that, actually reproduce that with the actual stones that are still there, uh, which are a very nice landscaping stone.
Yeah, just trying to figure out some buffer there in some way.
So there'll be a landscaping buffer in front of the parking lot, there'll be a parking lot, an open parking lot in the front of the building, and then to the, to the left of the building, there'll be a ramp down into the parking lot underneath the building.
Okay.
Which you can see on that elevation.
Yep.
The building will be brought forward a little bit from the existing building, but not dramatically so, and we talked to the neighbors about that, in fact, we had the neighborhood meeting and stood in the parking lot, so we could share kind of those details with the neighbors.
So, I'm just giving you an idea, so, this being Topman Street, the new, uh, walkway, roads out, drive-by sidewalk will come along here, and then there's this like grade change with some green space, and it will go right out to the back.
Okay.
So having said that, I'd like to just have Mr. Burke just talk, talk briefly just about the engineering aspect of it.
Sure. Thanks, Sean. Uh, good evening, everyone, my name is, uh, Jim Burke, a professional civil engineer at Commonwealth Massachusetts, DeSalle Burke Sala offices here in Quincy. Um, I'll be brief, uh, this project from, uh, 2001, it was constructed, it was, uh, it was rear drainage and front drainage, two catch spaces, um, roof runoff went over the ground, and direct connect into an 18-inch RCP that flows into the city, uh, city system. Uh, we took that, uh, system and, and switched it around a little bit, we did a lower, uh, collection system, recharge system, that, uh, provides drainage, very small watershed on the lot, that, uh, drains down the driveway to access, uh, the underground garage. So you have that system, which is, uh, contained all by itself. And then you have the recharge for the roof runoff, which is a, it'll collect the surface runoff from the roof, and it actually collects runoff from the parking lot above, and also connects to the, um, that 18-inch RCP. Uh, it's been peer reviewed a couple times, both by Chen, and, uh, when I mean Chen, I mean Quincy DPW, sorry about that, and, um, also by, uh, a peer review for the planning board. And, and Sean spoke to it earlier, we're, we're close, not some bolts are there, uh, new water, new sewer, um, the water quality is gonna improve, uh, the water volume storage is gonna increase, and the volume going off-site is significantly reduced because of the recharge, um, uh, 'cause everything's just running off now, it's pretty sick, the site's pretty much paved as it is, and, uh, I'd say, that's about it.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
At the end of Topman Street, is there a drainage issue there now from, uh, Crown Colony?
I, any drainage up in, in back that area up there, do you know?
Not to my knowledge.
So there is, uh, there is a retaining pond that backs up to the end of, uh, Topman Street.
Okay.
Uh, the neighbors could speak better to the, whether there's an ongoing issue, but, uh, as far as, we're on the, the opposite end.
Right, yeah.
Uh, drainage would, would flow the other way.
Yeah, I, I just, out of curiosity, I, I just know if.
Yeah. This project will definitely assist, if there's flooding there, we'll help it.
Yeah.
I can honestly say that.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I just, I, I was just curious, I, I didn't recall it when I went out for a site visit, to the end, I wasn't sure what was out there, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, sir.
Thank you.
And as Mr. Burke said, that's been reviewed by both the city's, uh, DPW department and the peer review engineers, and I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the letter that, that was forwarded to you by the planning department will reference that a lot of those issues have been appropriately addressed, and that they are very close to making a favorable recommendation, and that we've satisfied the conditions of site review. Thank you.
Any questions, then? Start.
No, I'd say considering the new transit zone coming down from the state, which is kind of hidden, not a lot of people know about it, uh, I'd say the project is timely.
Question, um, on the, um, the footprint, you said that you're gonna expand out a little bit, I'm looking at the dimensional request, so, particularly in the, on the, um, the rear, you're going from 72 to 10 feet.
Yeah, so the, the footprint, I, I think it's referenced was the fact that we're trying not to move towards Stopman Street any further, uh, it's marginally moved forward, I want to say less than 10 feet in that direction, and that's what we tried to do, is take all of that construction and put it back, which, uh, essentially ends up into a pocket, uh, made up of, um, Crown Colony on two sides, uh, and a, an unbilled right-of-way, and then on the other side, the industrial properties that are to the right. So we tried to push it back rather than infringe any further on the residential.
And, and, and that area, Rodman Street, essentially not improved, as, as Mr. Galvin said, so it's really impacts no one, uh, it's not utilized roadway.
And on that right side, you're going from 26 to 4, um, can you speak to that?
So that's just a matter of, of, of physical need, uh, the, the, the problem, one of the items causing our, our zoning dilemma here is this interesting little point, um, not sure how it ever got created in that way, but we've got this little pump-out that comes into the side of our property, we would have much, uh, rather centered the, the construction, uh, building around it, and we had some layouts that did that, were, really didn't lend us with any advantages when we were all done, ultimately, it would have caused us to go up another story and to bring the building forward and push it sideways, we thought it was more important to keep it down to four stories than to go to the five stories. Um, this, it, not only is this a point coming into the property, which we would have traditionally tried to purchase, it's a point coming into the property owned by two commercial condominium developments, so there are hundreds of people to negotiate with, it just wasn't gonna be something that we would.
Understood, I think.
And there's a, and, and the abutter, the abutter on that side is also, it's an industrial user, uh, so we have no impact on their residential interest.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm gonna read in the, uh, letter from planning, dated August 18th, Chairman Atkins, bailed on us. I am aware that the proposed project at 21 Topman Street will be on the agenda for the regularly scheduled ZBA meeting being held on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. This project proposes the construction of a new four-story 32-u, 32-unit residential building. The proposal is located in industrial A zoning, and therefore will require a use variance to allow for residential development. The planning department is in favor of the use variance to promote the residential growth in the underutilized industrial district. Be advised, in response to the Commonwealth Section 3A of Mass General Laws, 40A MBTA Communities Legislation, the planning department and the city solicitor's office have been tasked to develop a compliant TOD transit-oriented development district that is at least 50 acres in size, located within a half of mile of a transit station, and provide the capacity for over 11,000 housing units. The city plans to extend the current Center Street transit-oriented, oriented development district over the current industrial zoning districts around the Quincy Adams train station. The proposed project at 21 Topman Street is located in the area to be, being considered for the new TOD. This case is currently active in front of planning board, planning department will submit a recommendation for approval to the planning board at its next public meeting on September 13th, 2023. In summation, the planning department is in full support of the issuance of a variance to allow for residential development for 21 Topman Street. Jim Fatsis. All right, anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call?
John Rutherford, 62 Grenwall Road, um, I was at the planning board, I already saw this, um, one earlier, um, this is good new growth, um, like Attorney Fleming said, there's 325 units that they're putting, um, Atlantic Development, right in that same area, and that's in the new district where it doesn't come to zoning, where it only goes to planning, so the benefit of this coming here, the people get to speak, but even on that one, at Atlantic Development, uh, one person spoke against that, I was the only person that spoke in favor of that project, so, this is a project that we need near the train stations that, you know, that we're saying, it is the place for new growth, it's unfortunate that, you know, people live in these dense areas, and they don't want them to get denser, but, you know, I look at like 175 Center Street, there's 375 apartment units that are in there, there's a ton of apartment buildings, most people have never even driven in 175 Center Street, but Center Street is a place which is a very dense area, and, um, I do think this fits in nicely, and we definitely need the new growth, um, so, um, I'm in support of this, thank you.
There you go. Second call, third call, call that part of the hearing closed. Oh, boy. That's a good one. Uh, correspondence, this is gonna take me a minute here. Uh, so, uh, 21 Topman Street, we've reviewed this middle for the above-referenced project, and our comments are as follows. Grading and drainage, is there any soil test at the proposed location for drainage structures to determine soil properties and level of water table? Two, the areas around the infiltration system, including the surface disability parking spots, will have significant ponding and may not be accessible under 100-year storm event. Three, provide TSS removal works each year varies flow pass. Four, due to rapid infiltration system, infiltration rate of the soil, we request the applicant provide some infiltration chambers in the surface parking area before dumping the runoff directly to the 18-inch RCP pipe on Topman Street. So, these are, whoa, like, 'cause they just addressed a lot of these, didn't they? At planning. Did they, did we get an updated one? All right, I'll just read them all. Uh, it's dated July 27th, that's why. So you've already done a lot of these?
We have, we addressed that, and there's been a response, and we've addressed the response.
And, and, you know, and for the planning board to act on this matter as well, they'll have to be, those letters will have to be clean letters, and all those matters being resolved. And we could certainly agree that.
Yeah, I, I'll just read them, and just, just in case, I'll just go quick.
Yep.
Uh, I know you've addressed most of these. Infiltration chambers before dumping runoff directly to the 18, 18-inch RCP pipe on Topman Street, it'll mitigate frequent flooding problems on Center Street, and also provide additional treatment for the runoff. Five, long-term operation and maintenance plan shall include. Snow.
Five, long-term operation and maintenance plan shall include snow storage, snow management. Records of inspections and maintenance shall be up to date and available for review. Maintenance plans shall be included in the condo association. Six, specific details related to the drainage system for the parking garage be submitted prior to the building permit. Seven, all abandoned structures should be removed to fill with dense grade stone. Eight, provide documentation to show the hundred, a thousand gallon tight tank is suitable for the garage. Nine, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the city of Quincy. Ten, the city of Quincy or the city's designated reps shall observe the construction of the stormwater management system following, at the following times, uh, upon completion of excavation, upon completion, upon completion of chamber and crushed stone installation and prior to backfill. The applicant shall provide at least seventy-two hours notice for set inspections. Water, perform water flow test with the city's water problem, existing water main six inches on the street is old and should be replaced with an eight-inch main to Center Street. All abandoned boxes involved shall be removed. Three, provide calculation to show proposed two-inch water service is adequate for thirty-two residential units. Provide one connection, use domains on the street and branch off the domestic and fire services with individual gates. These six-inch pipe with gate to connect the city's mains and install six-inch gate on the sidewalk before reducing to four-inch pipe for the project. Applicants should confirm the appropriate connection with DPW prior to construction. Sewer, the existing pipes and manholes on the street should be inspected with pelvis and pre-post development or to check the condition of the system. Two, explain why the new sewer service will not connect all the way to the manhole on the street. Three, all abandoned structures should be removed to fill with dense grade stone. Four, a profile should be provided for proposed sanitary, sanitary sewer connection or any additional gravity utility mains that may experience potential utility conflicts. General, one, the city has a policy with any new sidewalk to be reconstructed with cement concrete room finish with a border to a joint. Two, install stone or concrete survey monuments to delineate the property line and public right-of-way. Three, indicate whether there is any soil contamination on the site or any hazardous material from the existing building. Four, is there any guardrail and fence on the proposed retaining wall and around the property? Is there any concrete or granite cover on the pavement area? Five, no spot grades are provided to indicate top or bottom wall elevation. Judging from the grading paint provided, the height of the retaining wall may be significant required design by a structural engineer. Six, the typical detail should be provided for the proposed retaining wall, including its typical section identifying setbacks from the adjacent property wall thickness and batter as well as relationship to the guardrail. Seven, the vehicular traffic on the street will be increased due to this development project. We request the street in this area to be repaved, aided by the nation's building permit. Applicants shall obtain approval from the Department of Public Works, Engineering Division and Building Department to be verified by the Traffic Department staff. Nine, the entire proposed stormwater sewer system shall be cleaned and flush prior to the final acceptance. Ten, submit AutoCAD file for the project before applying for a building permit. Eleven, upon completion of the project, submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all utilities are constructed and designed with no illicit connections found at uncompleted project site. And twelve, upon completion of the project, as-built plans shown all utilities, building footprints and finishing grade need to be submitted along with an AutoCAD file. As-built plans shall be in the Mass State Plane Coordinate System. The developer and the contractor shall be in design engineer survey prior to the installation of foundations and utilities to allow for proper inspection and data collection as the as-built plan.
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
Felt like the old speed reading, you know? All right. Anyone opposed or undecided? I do have a couple of letters here. If you did send a letter in, I will, uh, if you're going to speak, I will hold off from reading it, but if you're not, I will, uh, gladly read it into the record for you. Opposed or undecided? First call? Yes. Hi, how are you? Just take your name and address for the record, please.
Come on, I live on twenty Tottenham Street.
Okay.
Directly across from twenty-one.
Okay.
Um, concerns, traffic that was brought up.
Yep.
I know the study, you know, the incorporated study from the other place, but we are dead end street. Seven houses, right? One corner entry only and that we're adding thirty-two unit onto the street with additional cars going in and out of the street every day. What we enjoy right now from the commercial building across the street is after five o'clock, it's quiet. Weekend, it's quiet. Our families come out, ride our bikes, hang out. Put a thirty-two unit, additional traffic, we will not have that anymore. Um, our quality of life will change. So that's why we're opposed.
Appreciate it.
Um, traffic that wasn't mentioned, uh, food delivery apps, rep hub, Uber Eats, all sorts. I use them privately.
Mm-hmm.
Um, delivery, Amazon, Prime, they all come, cause we all use them. So those will be additional, um, traffic going in and out that we don't particularly see maybe on the weekends right now, but we'll see them all during the weekends when the, if the units are built or when the units are built. It's just too massive. Too much traffic for our little street.
Thank you.
Sorry. Please accept that in consideration.
Thank you. Feel free, yeah. Come on up, yeah.
Jackson Mon, twenty Tottenham Street, husband.
Yep.
Uh, concerned about the height, it's going to be another eleven feet higher than it is, it's going to block sunlight also. Was wondering, could propose to make it three stories instead of four? Less than the amount of minutes, less than the amount of parking spaces. How's make it better?
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity here. Peter Stevens, eighteenth Tottenham. And, um, again, concerns have been raised about traffic. It's already, it's a narrow street. We understand the state ordinance and all the rest of that, but it's a narrow street to begin with. We already have to deal with parking during the day, almost on our front lawns on that side with people who park at the tee. And I don't know if any allowances are going to be made for, um, residential parking on the street or not, how that would work, but the other issue is, um, small street, narrow street, having that influx of cars from the, um, from the development. I still feel we haven't gotten any really good answers on the traffic situation, on the traffic studies. Mr. Galvin did discuss the traffic studies that, um, they had done with it, but still it just seems as though, um, what appeared in the Quincy Sun, for instance, in the article that traffic was going to be significantly decreased, it's left out there, but there's really no explanation to us as to how that's going to occur. Center Street, and it's understandable, it's, um, a densely populated urban area. Center Street is a main drag, to put it mildly, but if anything, it's going to make it more difficult for anyone getting in and out of Tottenham Street at this point. Might be different if it wasn't a dead-end street, but that's the reality. But anyhow, I just wanted to raise the traffic concerns and I still feel that all the answers that are needed for the neighbors, um, they still haven't been addressed, uh, satisfactorily. So.
Appreciate it, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Bill Sam South, three fifty-six Washington. Um, I have two themes, and I hope you can keep them in mind as I move along. One is, this is a big ask. The other is, what's the hurry? And what I mean by that is, this is a big change in policy. I'm aware of the TOD plan, but that was announced last June to be worked on this summer, provided this fall. Subsequently, just this week, and if, if the board's not aware of it, I'll gladly fore you the information. The governor's office came down with revisions of what the TOD expectations were and they backed off and they rejiggered some things and it's still kind of up in the air, cause there's still bits one on the regulations, but it looks going to be less owners. There's also information that suggests that Quincy is at about ninety percent compliant. So what does that mean in the grand scheme of things? I understand that this is right next to a TOD development that was approved and it makes perfect sense in the grand scheme of things of the way that the, the area is redeveloped and this, that and the other. It may well be a legitimate proposal. But if you approve this variance ask, what your board is doing absent, the city producing what it's going to do, chewing on what the state wants and chewing on what this, what the city's compliance is, at present per the expectations, you're basically acting as a policy board, not as EBA. To that, I suggest you might want to slow this down a little bit, continue it for a while, wait till this stuff comes down and then you have a better context. I understand that you, you know, variances happen, but variances should be for smaller things unless you're looking at a big, in the general sense, whereas this is being done within the context of big things coming and this project for runs what's going to happen, no matter how you look at it. That's not the way it should be done. The new zoning board or this stuff should be presented, commented, approved, blah, 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 not do a sizable project that really will set the table going forward in the area. So all I ask is to slow walk this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sam South. Sir?
My name's Peter Gichi, trustee of the Gichi Realty Trust. I own the adjoining property at nine Tottenham Street. And I do have a couple of things. First thing, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the history of that area. Uh, I'm not exactly sure of the dates, but there used to be a granite company called Peter Settle, Aseto Melody and Sons, where his, uh, Mr. Galvin's building is now, he had a stone cutting operation going and across the street from there, he had a granite cutting and mining company. Well, uh, one day he had it up for sale and it sold and next thing we knew across the street they were building houses, Mr. Galvin, I guess, but I didn't realize that. Well, come to find out, this was a couple of years after the houses went up, I was in town hall, whatever, I was doing some research on something. And we were, uh, we were never notified that the rezoning took place. We never were, never received any, uh, notice that they had to go for rezoning or hearing anything. Just near the day, it was too late to do anything about it and those houses were built. They shouldn't be there right now, but that should all be, would never pass zoning board for use changes. Then we go back, step up to around the year two thousand nineteen ninety-nine, I'm not sure. Mr. Galvin applied for, uh, a small, smaller, I think, residential building on that property. I'm not sure how many units there were at the time, I can't remember, twenty years ago. And the board denied the application. Neighborhood opposition and whatever reason it was denied. Then a year, a couple of years later, they tried to change the use again to us take here center and that was denied, cause it specifically prohibits any of that residential law schools at that area. Now we're here today and this board should be, uh, ruling on current conditions, like the previous speaker said, not what might happen, that is going to happen that you know about, but conditions that exist right now. He has no, uh, he needs almost every variance there is to put that building and he wants to build there. He, he hasn't typically running commercial building on the site now. Unfortunately, he doesn't have a ten, a large tennis, but that's, that's the economic to the business. I just feel, I, I have the construction ad next door and, uh, can you see thirty-five units that balcony is overlooked in my property and the problems it's going to create between both parties, no matter what happens. You have my letter there that I wrote to the board. It has a lot of reasons, uh, that I feel the board should do its due diligence and, and deny this application at the moment under current conditions. It doesn't come out, he's not in the TOD zone at the moment, from what I understand, they say it's going to change, but as of tonight, uh, he, it doesn't conform to the TOD regulations. I don't feel it blunt, it, he mentions in his application that it would act as more of a buffer, isn't it, for the neighborhood, but I feel his small commercial building that's there now as the medical building, whatever, acts more of a bumper, buffer than a four-story thirty-five unit apartment building. Again, I, I can't see where traffic wouldn't increase, not, it may not be by much, but it could increase some. I can't believe all those cars wouldn't increase traffic. Plus, the, the traffic is seven days a week with residential and not five days a week. And, uh, doing, oh, I do have one other thing. I don't know if familiar with, uh, housing Quincy commission?
Hmm.
Uh, they did a, uh, for twenty-two to twenty-seven forecast or whatever. And one of their main points that they, let me find it, huh? Brought out in the commission is that the areas that they felt were ripe for, uh, more residential areas. Let me see if I got something there. Oh, yeah. And I'll quote, it says, "General patience flagged by the housing capacity analysis," that they did, whatever that means, "for potential suitability include Wallaston, Quincy Sun and North Quincy and Crown Colony. As residents prioritize these areas for new housing opportunities over others, which can include South Quincy where we are." And they felt that it would be better to develop those areas first, uh, more denser than the current areas of our area. And that's a commission that was commissioned by the city of Quincy to have done. That's part of it, sorry, a little dry here.
That's all right. I understand the feeling.
I had some water. But anyway, I just feel that as of right at this moment with existing laws, existing zoning, zoning, in my letter, that it should be enough information to deny this permit at the moment.
I'm looking at your letter, you kind of hit on everything, so is there anything else?
No.
I don't need to read it. It'll be in the record, but I think you, I, I may try to leave anything out.
Give you a little bit of history.
No, I appreciate that.
That's why I did it in the first.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? Sure. Please come up.
Hi, I'm Ashley from thirty Tottenham Street.
Deputy Peter, thirty Tottenham Street, the husband. Uh, feel like this is dead end street, you know, when you have the thirty-two unit, um, you're going to be, a lot of cars coming in and out, it's tight already, that's, and now, and, um, and then we have thirty-two unit, you assume people are down by these, maybe two cars average right per unit. And then you have forty-nine parking, they're going, they're eventually going to overflow into the street. Especially when you have a party, if people come up in, meet, gather and stuff like that, money is on there, you're going to be seeing a lot of cars, you know. As of right now, we've got cars parked around our house. Sometimes they don't have parts to block our driver. I've never seen so many cars come in, use my driver for U-turn, you know, on a database and so.
Yeah. And, um, yes, like more people may take the tee, but that doesn't mean they don't own a vehicle. So most people take the tee, own a vehicle, so I don't think it's a.
Yeah, maybe they can minimize the burden, like I said, like just, maybe minimize one floor, maybe minimize unit, that might help the traffic situation and parking situations. So.
Yeah, my concern is lack of parking space in the area, uh, because Mr. Galvin's technically introducing sixty-two vehicle owners to Tottenham Street and there's no way our street can handle that many cars. It's too much, too much to handle.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed? Oh, I won't call that part of the hearing closed, I got two letters to read in. Uh, John Meragius, two thirty-one Liberty Street, uh, strong opposition to the application for the thirty-two unit structure and is, is in substantial violation of the zoning ordinances. I request that we've been to adhere to these zoning ordinances as continued weighted waivers have a detrimental effect on a small neighborhood adjacent to the property in question. I'll make my attempt to be here, but I didn't, I don't think we heard from them. And then, um, there's no address, right? Did you put an address? Scott Shore, Hilltop Street. Can you use just a street or can we read it in if it's just a street? If he doesn't have an address, put the, the number. Yeah, that's what I thought. Um, Scott Shore, Hilltop Street, um, against, um, sorry, this is not about this project. No, it's Hancock Street. Oh. Yeah. Not one apartment or condo should be built in Quincy, including on Tottenham Street. City's been overbuilt for years, nothing's been done about it. Too many times buildings, whether single-family homes, multifamilies or commercial buildings have been torn down and replaced by big ugly condo or apartment buildings. Lawsuits should have been filed years ago to stop this once and for all. City's overdeveloped, overpopulated, too much traffic, too much crime, too many transients with no roots to Quincy at all, all due to overdevelopment. Time to replace the planning board with people who live in the city and care enough to make sure it doesn't keep getting hurt. We don't live in the city. That's the same one, yeah. Comments, questions? You guys got thoughts?
Well, far as I know, the transit zone of the state is not in locks, that they're pretty well set that what they want, what they're telling the cities that they want done.
I know, I know a couple of people mentioned to slow down, but like, you know, I know, I know a couple of people mentioned to slow down, but like, you know, thinking about a project, I mean, outside of that, we've seen numerous projects in these, you know, that we've kind of, we've, Quincy's kind of been ahead of the curve on paying attention to.
Well, the Galvin Group has been a good corporate neighbor for a lot of years. We don't have any complaints. They come up here, they say what they're going to build, they build it, and it's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, any comments?
Yeah, I listen to the opposition. Their concern is with traffic and parking on the street, height restriction. I don't think four floors is that extraordinary for new development, new construction for condominiums. There's enough re-rented out, there's going to be owner occupied. They have plenty of parking for this, for this structure. And a lot of it is underground, so it's not even going to be seen, which is helpful. I also find that changing industrial to residential for this purpose in this area does make sense. There are a little industrial use coming into the city in order to welcome it. So, we do have four T stations already in this, in the city, and I think it's time to build residential use around those structures. So, I am not opposed to changing industrial to residential use.
Yeah.
And the traffic, again, getting back to that, there was a traffic study done, it was again reviewed in a peer review by the city. It appears to be in keeping with, you know, typical, typical traffic studies, and if it didn't come down in sort of, it was going to be very detrimental for a neighborhood this size. I do recognize it's a small street, and it's a one-way street. I do recognize that. But you do have quite a sizable building there now. It was a warehouse, converted to an office. There are lots of other things that could go in there that might be worse than having neighbors, so I'm in favor.
I agree with Mr. Chairman on the potential worse uses of the property. The traffic is unusual everywhere. I'm not saying that. There's an easy resolve to it, so I don't think there's a burden with it. But again, I see a residential use, everybody, I think everybody has this image that the parking prints of the thirty-two units are all going to come out the door at seven-thirty, and they're all going to come home at five o'clock. In our recent history, when we've reviewed traffic studies, that's not, that's not necessarily the case. And there could be management of some of it with people coming and going at various The delivery aspect is not something I thought about too much, but I can understand the concern there. But I've been down, I was treated at that building a few years ago, and the traffic in there during the day was pretty tough to find a place to park. And if they can contain the parking on the site, which I would imagine they would do with the numbers that they're showing us, I'm comfortable with it being a residential use as opposed to it being an industrial building or something along those lines, a commercial use. That's just the way I feel about it. The traffic study eventually will go through planning, and if there's a remedy to what they believe the traffic, this situation will be, they'll find it. They'll come up with some sort of, they'll devise a way to correct it. We've seen that occur in some of these projects that were approved. So, that's my opinion on those.
Anything changes made to unit count at planning, say, have the best of their night without a planning, does that have to automatically come in, back in?
If it was smaller, though.
If it's smaller, no, only if it's bigger.
Right, but not to play it in here.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know. I mean, I just, I was just wondering if it went, I thought if it went smaller, it didn't have to come back. I was just confirming. Yeah, I kind of agree with the sentiments. I understand the neighbors, I feel for anyone that, you know, is going to be impacted by, you know, a large residential building, but I just, it's... The alternate use will be, in my opinion, like you said, Russell, it's like you could run into some, some type of use that you don't want, you know?
See the board council have any opinion?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Devine. Council Devine, did you want to speak at all? Did you want to say a few words?
Uh, okay.
I apologize. I didn't see you there.
Oh, that's fine.
He's hiding a one of the pictures.
One seventeen Cross Street, James Devine. About the whole neighborhood, I'm concerned about the overlay. So, I don't want it to look like North Quincy, so I think that by controlling how we build certain buildings, we're already at three hundred and four that went in pretty easy right down the street, so I really feel for my neighbors because they really, they have their valid thoughts. But I'm more concerned what's going to happen with the future. I'd hate to see three hundred units going there again, but at the same time, this is a tough one.
Yeah.
You know, because the, what the state's doing to us, I don't think's right. The red line's broken, but with that being said, we have a tough road ahead of us, and so, yeah, it's very tough. So, I don't, I don't have a lot to add. Sorry.
I think I agree with your sentiments about the red line. I kind of laughed at them, you know, shoving this T O D down our throat, and you don't have a usable means of transportation, but.
And maybe twenty years ago, when you get to Washington, fifteen minutes would be excess.
Yeah, now forty-five to an hour. It's not, nobody's taking it. Everybody's driving instead.
Right, so I really feel that the state is doing us injustice, but that's not for us to decide.
Yeah, I mean, and look, I, I think it's a good project. I think that just parking there, you know, over one and a half for a dimensional use, the dimensional variance on the right side, it's a, it's a non, you know, non-residential tenant, and behind, to the left, you know, I just, I think it's a good use of space and a repurpose of the lot, so I'll be in favor of it. W. Zed, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Z B A twenty-three dash fifty-eight Edward Fleming Esquire for various to remove the existing commercial structure and construct a thirty-two unit residential building on the premise number twenty-one Tottenham Street, Quincy, Mass. I make a motion to accept as presented.
Second. Calls are favored? All right, close?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys need five minutes. Are you good?
Take five.
Take five minutes. Floor's yours again.
Do you want to read?
Yeah, probably do.
Yeah.
Z B A twenty-three sixty-one The Marion Group LLC for advantage to demolish the existing supermarket and construct a new six-story, fifty-three unit residential building on the premise number seven thirty-one Hancock Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Edward Fleming, on behalf of The Marion Group LLC, for the property of three, uh, seven thirty-one Hancock Street. This property is located in a Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District. Why are we here, then? I'm sure you're asking that. Well, the Wallaston Urban, the Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District was enacted by the city. However, it hasn't been completed because the city has now been required to undergo A M I P A, A M I P A filing, whereby they're, they'll obtain the final state approvals, and then the, and then the district will then take precedent. So as of right now, this is actually zoned in a business C zoning district. So this is much like the project that I came before you on, as what I call the Barry's Deli Newcombe Farm Block, where there was a residential proposal proposed there. We had, we had sought and obtained a planning board, site plan review approval, and then we came to this board for the zoning approval that's required because it's still in a business C district. And as you know, the business C district does not mimic the same dimensional provisions that the new zoning district enacted. Some of those being the minimum lot area per dwelling area, changes from five hundred to three hundred and twenty-eight square feet per unit, and the setbacks have changed as well. So as of right now, where we are required to seek relief from this board as well. The property of seven thirty-one Hancock Street is better known as the prop, the market, the New York market, that was located in the parking lot right next to Saint Anne's School, uh, Saint Anne's Church, I'm sorry. The, the seven thirty-one, actually, that parcel only includes the site on which the building is built. It does not include the parking lot that surrounds that building. That building, that parking lot was actually leased by the owner of the market, the operator of the market, from the church, and the church continues to own that parking lot. And therefore, the site as a commercial use was not a good one, because it required the renting of space in the, in the church parking lot in order for it to operate. As a result, when the owner decided that he was going to sell this property, different use of that site made, was really almost required, because parking needed to be created on the site itself, so that it could actually provide parking for its own use. The property is a twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-four square foot property. The building takes up almost the entire site. The building as it sits today, the market as it sits today, is built almost lot line to lot line. It's, it's almost on the property line as Hancock Street and Wentworth Road. It runs along the, the church's parking lot, and it also abuts the church's parking lot in the rear where there's a gated area that's utilized for the dumpster area. The supermarket over the years has operated there, although there's been a number of different uses there. You may remember Eastern Bank was there at one point in time. There were different markets there. I think at one point in time, it was a C V S years ago. But the market that's operated there hasn't been a good neighbor for the, for the city, hasn't been a good neighbor for the church. The parking lot that they used on the lease was supposed to be maintained. It was very rarely maintained or cleaned. There were typically carts on the lot. And the market actually had the right to use the entire parking lot, so it interfered with church parking at times, and it became somewhat problematic. During our due diligence, we went and met with the pastor at Saint Anne's Church and the, and the woman who was the head of the real estate division of the church, and we had a great meeting with both of them. And we've worked out an agreement with, with the church that my client, if he's approved at this site, will maintain the parking lot. He'll have the right to use about fifteen spaces in the lot to supplement the parking that he'll provide himself, but he's going to maintain the landscaping as it, as it goes up the hill to Saint Anne's, and he's going to clean the parking lot. In fact, we just hired, just the other day, Matt Nichols from Nichols Landscaping to go and clean the site because it hadn't been cleaned in a while by the, by the market or the prior owner. That market had, actually went out of business, and the owner then sought to, sought to develop, or sought to sell the site. Marion Group is, is a, the principal of The Marion Group is a gentleman by the name of Derek Fitzgerald. I've worked with Mr. Fitzgerald on a couple of different properties in the city of Quincy. Smaller in size, but we did the old, we did nine units down on Mill Street a number of years ago. I think we came before this board for permitting on that. That was built, and it's a beautiful, nice project on Mill Street. The West Quincy Motors site, you may remember the West Quincy Motors site, which operates in West Quincy, operated there for years. He's actually developed both sides. They had one, they had a building on one side, and then they had a parking area on the opposite side. He actually developed fourteen condominiums there, did a beautiful job, all with Brian Donahue, his architect, who designed those and really improved those neighborhoods. Derek is going to, I'm confident that Derek, with Brian's help and with Carlos's help, that Derek's going to do the same thing here, and you'll see the renderings of this building, which is beautiful. So what Derek is proposing here, The Marion Group is proposing here, is to demolish the existing supermarket building, construct a new fifty-three unit residential building with two levels of garage parking underneath for sixty-six parking spaces. He's also, as I indicated to you, ended into an agreement with the church that he'll maintain the parking lot, and he has another fifteen spaces. And the church has indicated to us that they would work even with him if there was a demand for additional spaces, but fifteen is what we thought was most reasonable. That gets us actually to a number that we felt is really comfortable here. The proposal, six stories in height, and I'll let Brian talk about the building in a lot more detail. And this has obviously been professionally designed. Carlos Sculte from C E C is the engineer on this matter. Carlos has been working very closely with the city's, the city's D P W department, but even more importantly, with Woodard and Curran. Woodard and Curran was hired by the city to do an analysis of the flood, flood control issues in the entire Wallaston district as part of this new zoning ordinance. And so they're very, very familiar with any impacts of flooding and drainage and concerns in that regard. And Carlos has worked, Carlos worked with me on the project that we permitted at the Barry's Deli Newcombe Farm Site, so Carlos became very familiar with the flood control issues there. And Carlos has now designed drainage controls to address the concerns at this site. We have applied, as we talked about, for site plan and review with the planning board. We were, and we responded to peer review comments, and through Carlos's efforts, had responded to the peer review comments, and we were essentially ready for a vote on August second. And due to the tragic death of Richie Need, that matter, that hearing was continued at everyone's request, so that, so that matters could be dealt with appropriately. Richie's loss was a huge loss for the city, by the way. He was a wonderful man. But we've done, we were close to essentially completing that matter, but we, but in consideration of the circumstances, that was continued. So we had this already filed, and hence why we're here, before you, before we've actually obtained that final approval. We think this is a significant improvement to the, to the area, to the, and it's really meets the intent of the new Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District. The Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District really wants to create housing within that community. And unlike, unlike Beale Street, where we had, where we had commercial on the first floor, the city didn't feel as though this, that was required in this particular location because we're a little bit outside that spot, but it's within close proximity to the Wallaston transit oriented, I mean, T station, therefore really transit oriented development. So what I'd like to do is, if I may, turn this over to Brian, let Brian kind of walk through the plans. As you can see from the rendering there, it's a beautiful building. And that, in fact, we went and met with the mayor as part of our due diligence early on in this proposal, and we sat with him, and we showed him some conceptual ideas that Brian had come up with. And the mayor talked to us about his, what he'd like to see there, and how he'd like to see a style that was going to be a little bit more compatible with the church next door and some of the residential neighbors in the, in the community. And hence, and Brian did a great job in coming up with a revised design that really incorporated a lot of the comments that were raised by him. So, having said that, Brian, if you want to just...
Thank you, Ed. For the record, Brian Donahue, principal of Donahue Architects here in Quincy. This project is a very exciting one for my office. We're really excited about the potential of building this building in the Wallaston area, that I'm very familiar with as a lifelong Quincy resident. I don't want to repeat or reiterate things that Ed has said, but I'm just going to go through my list. The corner of Hancock Street is currently a, basically a half, half an acre site. It's actually point four-nine, but I like to round up. So, the site is, as Ed mentioned, currently improved by a one-story building, which is unoccupied and disrepair as it, as it sits now. It is bordered to the south by Saint Anne's Church and parking lot, and also to the west, the rear of the site is also bordered, part of that church property, as Ed mentioned. It's always been our intention to be respectful of the church. In fact, the mayor, when we met with him, one of the first things on his list was, you know, you're right up against a fairly prominent iconic building in the city, and we want you to be sympathetic to it. We'd come in with something a little bit more contemporary, so we went back to the drawing board and came up with something which we think is more appropriate and fitting for the city and for the context of this, this particular area. The cover sheet basically shows a rendering of a building from the intersection. These photographs, I'm sure you're all familiar with the site, but this shows the current situation with the building on the corner, a view from the Hancock, Wentworth intersection, and this is looking down Wentworth towards that building as well. As you can see, the context is that Clay Street Housing Authority Building is... As you can see, the context is that Clay Street Housing Authority Building is with a near shot of our site. So as Ed mentioned, we have a 53-unit building proposed, and it is going to be two levels of parking and five levels of living space, a total of 53 units. And there'll be 32 bedrooms and 23 single bedrooms. As you can see, the Hancock Street exposure, we don't have any access to it other than a pedestrian entry into the lobby. The lobby area is at the corner, and that takes that curb space that goes up to the entire height of the building. So we've had an iteration of this where we had a, this parking level at the lobby base is basically level of Hancock Street. But we had proposed that curb cut and entryway into the parking area from Hancock, and that wasn't seen as an optimum solution. So we managed to find a space along Wentworth property lines to get two entries into the parking and also maintain a drop-off area for move-ins and deliveries of mail and trash removal. So Wentworth Street here, and this is our other side across the street, so at this point, we have, the grading actually works very well for this concept because the topo goes down Wentworth. So when we get to the entries into the garage, it's basically a half a level up and a half a level down. So there's no long ramps that are required in this. So it worked out kind of neat in terms of access to the parking lots. As Ed mentioned, there are two levels of parking and 66 total vehicles, coupled with the parking, maybe, I think Carlos's plan shows a little better, the church parking along this property line, which is shared by the church. So we've got, you know, we've got a fairly significant footprint for the building, but we also have some green space at the end for dog walk park and outdoor. We pulled the building off the corner so we can soften up the elevations, the landscaping on the corner as well. And again, the key element here is that we maintain the entry to the parking and the drop-off area servicing on Wentworth Street, so keeping it off the busy street, Hancock I won't bore you with the minutia of this, but these are the two parking levels. The lower level, which is accessed by a ramp off Wentworth, down here, we have, we have a trash room that is serviced onto Wentworth as well, and ancillary mechanical spaces and so forth. The upper level of parking, which we're showing on that plan, has the lobby, mail areas, trash room, and some bike storage. These two boards show the building elevations, so we're at, again, this is the Wentworth Street elevation, showing the two garage entryways and the entry lobby on the corner. So we have two levels of parking. This is actually a residential building, so the other level of parking is down half a level below this. So we've got two levels of parking and five levels of living, totaling 53 units. The building itself is approximately 58, 50 feet, 59 feet tall to the highest point. And again, we kind of looked at this as trying to implement some classical elements and some pitch roofs and so forth, and dormers, and bays and so forth, to give it more of a residential feel. And the material selection is, at the base level, we're going to be using a thin cast stone, obviously red brick, composite panel system, a synthetic slate roof with some copper roofs for the dormers and so forth. So we think it's, we think it's an appropriate palette of materials, and we think that it's a fitting design. This is the Hancock Street elevation. The west elevation, which is what you would see approaching from west, the west from Wentworth, and this is the rear elevation for the building from the parking lot, the St. Anne's parking lot. So this building section, again, according to the minutia, shows the two levels of parking and the five levels of living space for the total height of approximately 68. This last board shows our modeling of the building in context on the site. So this is the view from Hancock Street approaching and heading south with the corner. This is a view of the building from the south, heading north, church property to the left here, and this is Hancock Street as you do it towards Wallaston Center. The top diagram there shows the building as it relates to the church. The building is actually 150 feet away from the church physically, and there's a 16-foot grade change. So in actuality, the church, the ridge, the highest point of the church will actually be, believe it or not, taller than our building because we're slowing down here, it goes immediately to, and the church, as you know, is built out of sort of an mound off the street. So there's, there's nothing here that's going to be overwhelming to the church. It's significantly different away from it, and the height is not going to be overwhelming to this neighboring parcel. I think, I think what we are proposing is something that is appropriate for this area. I think we'll be using the most updated energy standards with potential solar on the roof, mandated EV parking stations, stations in the parking garage areas, which is becoming more and more prevalent in most communities where it's being mandated. So we'll be doing that, and also, we actually like this project, and we think it's a good addition to the city.
Carlos Donahue, quick question on the back there. The building, it's basically sitting on almost the exact footprint of the building today, correct? So like that, the entrance way that the church parking uses today, that still will remain, correct? That's what I thought. Thank you.
And the builder's pushed it back a little bit further than it exists.
Okay. Thank you. So...
For the record, Carlos Sculte with Civil and Environment Consultants, we're the civil engineers on the project. He's going to have the stormwater layout, utilities, traffic, geotechnical conditions. If it's okay, I'll just walk over to the board here for a second. I think the important part of what we're talking about, the layout, is the existing building is right up on the corner here. So that was one of the things we took a look at from the development of the property, was not only from a presentation standpoint, helping landscape that corner, we're going to make it a much more pleasant intersection there, but by pulling the building away from the property line, we're able to increase the sightlines a little bit better at that intersection as well. So that was one of the things that we took a look at, and the version that we have in front of the board here today, in front of you here today, is a version that went through a review process with the Department of Public Works, city's traffic engineers looking at the project, and there was a third-party peer review consultant looking at it as well. So there was a lot of input that we received from various parties throughout the planning board review process as well. So the plan here that we're talking about, Brian already mentioned the ingress and egress in the building. We did take one of the access points off of Hancock Street originally proposed. There is a bus stop there as well, so great access to public transit. So all that infrastructure along Hancock Street will remain as is, and all the deliveries and the drop-offs will happen on the Wentworth Road site. So one of the things that we take a look at, and then a lot of attention paid to in these areas, is stormwater management. As Ed mentioned earlier, the city does have some localized flooding issues in the Wallaston area. This site is elevated above those. We're outside of those areas they've identified as problematic, but the sister project across the street, we'll leave a bit more detail on that one because it's a little bit lower in elevation and abuts some of those concerns. But we did a number of geotechnical explorations, some test pits to follow, to provide some more information for the peer review. Designed a stormwater management system that's designed to provide stormwater recharge as well as improve water quality to the runoff from the site. Right now, there isn't on there today, so everything we're proposing does meet the stormwater standards as well as the city of Quincy's stormwater management standards. So significant upgrade from that standpoint. And with the improvements that we're proposing, it'll be a reduction in the total runoff as well as an improvement in the quality of the stormwater runoff from the site. Everything will be connected to the existing infrastructure in Wentworth Road, so there will be no runoff across the public sidewalk or into the roadway. From a utility standpoint, we're also going to be cleaning up some of the overhead electric services. Right now, they serve the commercial facility that's there today. So we'll be taking those services, bringing them underground. So all the new services for electric telecommunications will be a new conduit that's underground. There is water service along the frontage. That was one of the requests by the city Department of Public Works to see if we could improve some of that infrastructure as part of the project. So as part of the discussions with the city, we have agreed to replace a significant portion of the water line that's in Wentworth Road along the project frontage, as well as repave that portion of the roadway as well. So at the end of the day, it'll be all new sidewalks, all new pavement, some new water infrastructure along that section of the roadway that was aged and could do some improvement to help improve the systems in the city. So all fairly standard sewer service, oil-water separators, as well as domestic service for the sewer, and fire service. All the buildings will be fully sprinkled, as well as a domestic service for the water as well. And then one of the aspects that we took a deeper dive into as part of the planning board review was the traffic analysis. Part of it, we provided a full transportation impact study to the city for review. Because of the existing commercial use that's there today, the proposed residential use really will not have that much of an impact on the existing traffic patterns at the site because of the nature of the use. Really, it's a negligible change to the traffic patterns in those areas. We did take a look at the movements, and Wentworth headed both south and north at the intersection of Hancock Street. So all that information's in the traffic study, but really a negligible change is to what's happening there today from a traffic standpoint. With that, I'll turn it back a bit.
Just for purposes and reference, too, I'm sure you're very familiar, the Quincy Housing Authority Building is a 12-story building directly behind the site. There's a 12-story building across Clay Street, directly adjacent to the Quincy Housing Authority Building, and then the new building that, at Beale, at Barry's Deli Newcom will be about a six-story building, which will be a similar height. So that will, this will kind of, this six-story height limitation will be very similar to some of the new buildings that will be constructed in the Wallaston Business District, although I think that the new district allowed for up to 10 stories right behind the CBS, and that may be entertained at that time. So that's our presentation, you see. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions?
No, couple things. Looks like you've got fairly robust landscaping design here.
We do. Do you have any questions, or?
No, 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 just noticing.
Significant landscaping in, not mostly, ideally in this area, but also there's a narrow scope on the church side, too. And there's going to be some landscaping in a five-foot strip that's along the building where that doesn't exist today. So that people that are parking in this area, wherever they right now look at trash and carts and other things, this will be, this will be a new landscape experience.
My question, you have no exterior surface parking, correct?
That's right.
Everything's inside except for what you come to an agreement with the church park?
That's right.
Do you have a long-term lease for that, or?
We've negotiated a long-term lease. It's a five-year renewable lease because of the status of the church state, they only do things in five-year increments. That's what they did with the prior tenant, but they've had a lease there with the tenant, I think, for 25 years. So we anticipate that as long as the church is there, it will be a continued lease.
Thanks.
Come on that line. So you have a right to use a portion of the parking lot, like you're maintaining all of it?
That's right. We have a right, we, I think what we did is we negotiated 15 spaces because we wanted to get to a 1.5 parking rate. So that's what we did, and we, we haven't designated exactly where those spaces will be, but we'll talk with the church about that. So we've agreed not only to keep it clean, but to also repave it if there's problems with holes and cracks and other problems. And also kind of landscape the area all along here, which abuts the church. This area here, if you walk, if you've been there, there's a stairway that goes up from that parking lot, and it's just a, it's kind of a landscaping area between this site and the church. And what we'll do is we'll maintain that as part of a landscaping plan.
So it gives you 81 parking spaces.
Gives us 81 parking spaces.
No rear entry, though, right? There's no entrance on this side, the parking lot side, is there?
Um, there's no, no, there's no entrance, exits on the parking lot, no, just those two entrances here. And this feature actually is a fantastic feature that was, that we discussed with the planning department, which is the drop-off area. So that parties that are visiting, you know, trucks that are dropping off packages have access to the package delivery room, and also folks that are moving in, this is a large enough area to pull in a small box truck and unload, and they have access to the elevators right here in the lobby, which is fantastic. And having that off the street really eliminates the need for any interruption in the street.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. I'm good.
Thank you.
Oh, no. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call?
My name's Neil Johnson, 72 South Bayfield. I don't live that far from here. Actually, I think this is pretty well thought out with the drop-off area, as not many places have that, so it's kind of odd. I never knew the parking lot wasn't associated with it.
Neither did I.
But I think it's pretty well thought out for this area. I'm for it.
Thank you. Second call?
Is this for both of them, or?
This is just 731, just on the site of the...
Are you going to repeat everything for the next one? Yeah, we'll try to do it quickly.
John Rotaferl, 62 Grandwall Road. I like this project, and I like the next one. It's good new growth. Together, they're going to be about, I estimate, about $300,000 worth of revenue to the city in taxes, probably assessed around $30 million. So we need the money. This is the zone where we're building, like Attorney Fleming was saying, 90 Clay Street and 80 Clay Street, a both high buildings, and there's probably going to be another high building, maybe even in between them in the future. But I like this project, and it's good new growth, so I'm in favor.
Second call, third call, call that part of the hearing.
My name's John Breach. I live 121 Clay Street, which is a road that runs directly in back of the church driveway and the area being discussed. When the MBTA in Wallaston was rebuilt, Clay Street and the surrounding streets on both sides of Hancock became Rat Village. And I'm not saying that humorously. I'm talking about when people were walking dogs, if a rat had been driven over on the road, there was a pancake rat there, you had to pull the dog away from it. I saw this happen. We had, my wife and I had rats move underneath a portion of our house. We didn't know the city would kill your rats for free, so why don't we spend $1,000 on killing rats? I would like to know that this building, which was not the cleanest supermarket in the world for, while it was open, and it's been closed and smelling bad for two years, is this building going to be exterminated before it's knocked down? Because otherwise, a whole lot of people are going to have to call the health department to get city exterminators out there. And it's going to cost a lot of money.
So there's a whole list of building conditions that before anything has to come down, that Mr. Collins and his team have to go approve and go through, you know, and is that part of it?
It is part of it.
That, so the process of making sure that, you know, a building's rodent-free, that's not going to disturb more. But we can also put it in as a condition for you, too, as well.
I would like you to do that because I hate to be the voice of the government, but I've already dealt with... But I've already dealt with it once. I don't want to do it again.
And Quincy's, you know, had to deal with the problem. The last thing, I think, and Attorney Fleming's your neighbor there. I'm sure the last thing he wants to do is to exacerbate the issue around the corner from his office as well. So, you know, I mean, we can certainly write that into the conditions. I'm sure they'd be amenable for that.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So, third call, we'll call that part of the hearing.
So are you, I just, are you opposed or undecided? If you want me to wait, I'm going to do that side, too. This is really, okay, all right. I just didn't know. It was a condition.
I wasn't until they had a meeting a few months ago, I went to. And I thought the building is beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
My.
Just your name and address for the record.
Martha Breach, 121 Clay Street.
Thank you, Ms. Breach.
My concern is Wentworth is you cannot get, you can barely get a car in each direction right now. And there's a 7-Eleven right on that corner, right in front of where the other, the next order of business is going to be. So I'm just, I know the traffic study, but I'm real concerned about the traffic getting up and down Wentworth and then trying to get around onto Clay, where we already have a lot of traffic. So that's my comment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so traffic study's a part of it as well. I mean, I know coming out of, I can, I've taken the turn out of, you know, trying to get onto Hancock Street. Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, it is a popular cut through, right? And I know it's a difficult intersection. I like the fact that they were pulling it back so that you can see more coming out the other way. But you know, you have a point there. So, you know, I'm sure that's addressed in the planning board's decision. I don't know that there's really anywhere to widen the street there for you.
Really, the 7-Eleven?
We should. Check all that 7-Eleven out.
I think that's why the drop-off area is so important here. So there won't be vehicles, you know, up on the curb. Everyone will have the opportunity to launch the property to deliver the items.
I heard you mention that and then you didn't point it out when you said it. So I was going to ask that, if you were putting it in the back. But I appreciate, you could see it on that one. You couldn't see it on your first render. Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call closed? There was one letter. It's that same letter from before. He references three projects. It's Scott Shore on Hilltop Street. And again, his biggest issue is he does not want anything built in the city of Quincy. And that this should be turned into a supermarket, which causes a lot of traffic. I think you guys did a good job with the renderings. I think, you know, it'll transform, start to transform that corner. I think, you know, to clean it up a lot personally. I like the fact that you're in negotiations with the church to, you know, take care of that hillside. Because there was always a ton of trash roaming around that parking lot, which I think spread out through the rest of the, you know, through the rest of downtown Wallaston. So I think it'll be a nice improvement. I don't know what else you could have done there. I think you guys did a great job.
Eighty-one parking spaces, you get a great drop-off. The design is great. Actually, looking at it, it's actually lower than the church, so peripheral will look nice. So I'm in favor. Thank you.
I have one question with the traffic study, just to that woman's point. Was there any consideration about the pros and cons of turning Wentworth into a one-way street?
We did look at that. Ultimately, speaking with the planning department, we didn't want to alter the existing traffic patterns because turning it one-way would increase it potentially on Clay Street. We didn't want to do that. And turning it one-way the other way makes it difficult for the loading maneuvering and everything to work for the site. So we did look at it. We also did look at geometric modifications along Wentworth. Ultimately, there's nothing we could really do. The right-of-way is already dedicated there. It is wide enough for two-way traffic. There's no on-street parking. We're not proposing any, so we're going to maintain that. But acknowledge that Clay is tight because of the on-street parking for the two-way traffic there. But you know, that's, we don't really.
In terms of.
All over what's happening on.
In terms of your professional opinion, seeing projects like this all the time, and we see it all the time, you know, compared to the prior uses, this is a much more.
It's a lower generator.
It's a lower generator and it's also a lower per-hour generator. It might yield more trips overall, but it would be per-hour, it would be way down, correct?
Yep.
We, related to the traffic, there's one point. Did you look at a right turn only coming out of Wentworth onto Hancock? Because of the way the stop line is for Hancock?
Yeah, you just get stuck there going left.
You can't, yeah.
You can't go left.
You can't go left on that.
Yeah, we didn't look at formally making that change, but we're happy to talk to the traffic department and if they have that as a recommendation, certainly take a look at it.
Because a better solution probably would be to come out up at Hancock and Beach, if you had to take a left, you know what I mean? Because that intersection is crazy trying to come out of there on a left turn.
You'd get backed up four cars or something.
Yeah, I mean, even, even the 7-Eleven has their own loop detector in there because that's how the traffic is generated by them.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the traffic that would be going northbound essentially on Hancock, or all points northbound, would likely make that left on Wentworth and the right on Clay to get out to Beale and Hancock towards that intersection because you're making more right turns, so you're not stuck at a left turn queue there.
You might keep that in mind, a right turn only coming out of Wentworth.
We'll certainly work with the city. If the city has that recommendation.
Or at least a suggestion. So otherwise, I'm in favor of the project. I think it's a good project. I'm happy that there's not a lot of detail on the first floor. It's strictly going to be residential. So I think it's going to be good for the community. It's close to the T, so I'm in favor.
Okay.
I agree.
Want to read it? And we'll just put in the, you know, the mitigation there.
Rat mitigation?
Yeah, rat mitigation.
ZBA 23-61, The Marion Group LLC. For variance to demolish the existing supermarket and construct a new six-story, 53-unit residential building on the premise numbered 731 Hancock Street with rodent remediation.
All those in favor? Aye. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
So moved.
Move through the next one quicker.
All right. I need to open that up real quick. You do. Just say. I'm not going to read them, but conditions will be required to be approved prior to any building.
Right, yes, absolutely.
Same thing. Conditions to be approved. ZBA 2362, The Marion Group LLC. For variance to construct a new four-story, 27-unit residential building on the premise on the 13 Wentworth Road, Quincy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board again. Yeah, back again. Again, Edward Fleming for The Marion Group LLC, 13 Wentworth Road. This project, this property is directly across the street. It's the parking lot, as we all know it. And again, it's actually not owned by the church. It's actually owned by a private owner, but it's a separate parcel, under separate, you know, under the same control of the, as the market. But it's a separate, it's a completely separate parcel. So it's not really, it was never, it was, it was only used as parking for the market by agreement of the owner.
Sure.
So if the owner chose not to permit that parking for this particular market site, that parking would not be available and that site would have had no parking at all. This property right now is, as I said, an existing parking lot. It's a 15,246 square foot parcel of land. It's also zoned Business C, but it's within the new Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District. And it was used, as I said, for overflow parking for the 731 Hancock Street site. I assume some folks from the church parked there as well, although it wasn't owned by the church, but it was done essentially by agreement. The site does not have any drainage, oh, has very limited drainage controls, I should say. And Carlos will talk about that in more detail and the existing status of those drainage controls. But it has no green space whatsoever. This proposal is to construct a new 27-unit residential building with two levels of parking underneath, again, to provide parking for this particular building, with 38 parking spaces on the property. The building will be four stories in height, not six, as the building across the street. So it will be lower in conjunction with the neighbors, the residential neighbors next door. It will also include professionally designed drainage controls that Carlos will talk about in more detail, and the addition of green space. And as you can see, this green space really that surrounds the building here on the photo, on the plan that you see, that will provide about 10 feet of green space on both sides and also in the back of the site, along with some green space in the front. It will have two entrances to the parking lot, as you can see there, that Brian can talk about in more detail. This is a, this is really a sister project for the existing project. We think it's a great new project that exists. It just continues this growth of residential in this transit-oriented area. We have also, this matter's also gone before the planning board. We had a planning board meeting. We made modifications. Carlos is actually working really closely with Wooded and Curran because Wooded and Curran had some flood control information that was, that Carlos was, made available to Carlos so that he could redesign the drainage controls to address this site. Right now, if you know this site at all, or you know the history of Wallaston, the corner of the site, this back area had become quite wet and somewhat flooded in the past. And a year, a number of years ago, the Quincy Housing Authority redid all of the drainage controls in the parking lot and then repaved their entire parking lot. And that really helped to alleviate some of the drainage control issues that were there. It still floods, however, because there's a catch facing right here that Carlos will talk about in more detail. This new drainage controls will help to alleviate the existing problems that exist there so that it will not impact the abutting neighbors as it has in the past because of the lack of drainage control measures. So let Brian kind of walk through the plans again and then have Carlos talk about that drainage.
Good evening, once again, Brian Donahue, architect of Quincy. It sort of stole my thunder. We've been looking at this as a little sister to the building across the street, or a little brother, as you'll have it. So what we're trying to do there is just basically make it compatible with the larger building across the street in terms of the building forms, the materials. We're still thinking about the same thin stone base for the parking area and brick and composite panels for the upper level and the actual top level of living space is built somewhat into the roof as well. So this, this building is 27 total units and the ratio is actually 12 two-bedroom units and 15 one-bedroom units. We have 38 car parking on two levels. The average unit size for this is a little bit smaller. And across the street, they're about 870 to 900 square feet for the twos and 780 to 800 for the one-bed apartments. So as you know, as Carlos's plans to pick the site drops off fairly quickly from Wentworth Street to the rear of the site. So what we tried to do was make the parking work similarly to the way we did it across the street as in going up half a level and down half a level. So we're using, we're using the topography to accommodate parking. Again, some context, photos showing Clay Street building, the 12-story building, which is directly behind us. This is also looking towards the CBA, 7-Eleven on the corner in Wentworth Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with the neighborhood. And this, this site plan shows a relationship with the project across the street, the green area buffer that we have surrounding the site. And we're about 20 feet off Wentworth Street. Actually, the lobby is about 12 feet off the street because that protrudes out onto Wentworth. Again, we have two garages, two garage doors. So again, the parking is totally enclosed within the building. So as you come off, one parking ramp goes up and one parking ramp goes halfway down. And we're utilizing its part of the area to access those. So on the ground level, we've got the trash room, mail delivery areas, and your code-compliant accessibility elevators and stairs and so forth that we do in our project. So again, this, this shows that we don't have the property here to do, to do the drop-off that we have across the street. So we'll be doing sort of curb, curbside deliveries and access for parking. Being a small building, we don't think that's going to be too much of a tax on the roadway. So trucks and deliveries and cars will be pulling up, you know, on the sidewalk here to access the building. But the tenants will all have parking spaces within the building. The two parking levels on the right and typical floor plans above where we've got two-bedroom units and one-bedroom units, double loaded corridors, simple layout, very uncomplicated as a building. Again, as I mentioned, we're using similar materials that we use across the street. So we've got the garage entries and the lobby entry at grade, obviously, with a thin cast stone base, red brick middle portion and composite panels and a synthetic slate roof for the, this is the Wentworth elevation, one of the ends. This building, the average grade, from the average grade, the height of this building is approximately 55 feet tall to the highest point of it. So again, we've modeled up this building and put it on the site so you can see the relationship as you're looking, as you're looking from the intersection of Hancock down Wentworth, you see the relationship between the two buildings, this one being four stories and that one being six. So I feel that there's a nice, sympathetic relationship between the two buildings. And this is elevation looking out towards Hancock Street. So if the same, the same criteria apply to this project as across the street in terms of energy resources and sustainability, as well as energy star appliances, all that stuff that is kind of mandated by the pros and say. So this is actually an interesting. That shows a relationship between the church and these two sites here on Wentworth. That's basically my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that's my office, if anyone cares.
That's why I highlighted it.
Carlos?
I have some questions as well.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question for you. So a couple of questions. First, maybe this for The Marion Group, maybe for you. Is it going to be condo or apartment?
I think he answered right now it's going to be apartments. But he said it's going to be dictated by market conditions because the owner actually was thinking about holding on to this and maintaining it in his own developed portfolio, so managing it.
One of the other questions related to that is the size of the two bedrooms. I've never, well, I'm not familiar with two bedrooms that are under 870 square feet. It seems to me that those are pretty small units. Wondering whether there are efficiencies built in that I'm not aware of, efficiency kitchens or something like that.
We haven't really, as you can tell by the plans, we haven't really got into the unit layouts yet. But we feel that we have them designed like in the office in our minds. We know that they're going to work. So there may be some manipulation of optimizing walls to make them more efficient. But the key point is to get to the 27 units. And it may end up being more ones than twos because the twos are a bit, a bit tight. So, but on the corners of the building, there's more opportunities to put two-bedroom units because you have living space in the corner and then separate the bedrooms. So we do feel that they're, they're going to be on the smaller side for sure. But it is, it is doable. We've done units that are 800, 900 square feet, two bedrooms, plenty of times. You know, they're not that generous, but they work.
I'm just trying to get a sense as to whether it's going to be owner-occupied or rented out. And given the size of them, you know, the applicants, these units. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carlos Colthie, the civil and planning consultants, the engineers on the project. I'll just walk through briefly. The landscape plan that you have in front of you, again, trying to maximize the setbacks that we have along Wentworth Road, providing additional deciduous trees, ground cover, shrubs, plantings to really help improve that streetscape. As I mentioned earlier, it's an existing parking lot today. There's no real landscaping to speak of there. So this would be an improvement as it relates to the interaction with the streetscape. And one of the things that we did take a look at for this project, as well as the project across the street, is ADA, accessibility, pedestrian connectivity to the environment. So we are actually widening the sidewalks along Wentworth Road on that side of the street. It happens at one half of the road due to how. It happens at one half of the road due to how the roadway was originally constricted. It's a little bit less than a foot narrower than the other. We're actually widening the sidewalk on this side of Wentworth Road to provide a more robust and generous sidewalk for pedestrian activity and connectivity out to Hancock Street as well as to the T going westbound on Wentworth, ultimately down Clay to the Wallaston T Station. So, that was something that came up through the coordination with the Department of Public Works and the peer reviewer on the project. So, from a stormwater management perspective, this site is one that's actually impacted by some of the studies that the city's peer review consultant, Woodard and Curran, had taken a look at for the Wallaston area as a whole. There was a flood inundation study that was prepared about a year or so ago that identified various flood conditions and potential solutions to help alleviate the flooding in the Wallaston area. In the interim, while those potential solutions are being evaluated and the city's charting a course for how to address those, we've designed a project to accommodate that local flooding that has been identified for all the various storm events. So, they identified elevations for the two, 10, 50 and 100-year storm events for what happens here in this area largely associated with infrastructure that's in the roadways. So, until those solutions and projects ultimately get constructed, we're designing for the worst-case scenario here. It's not a FEMA regulated flood zone. It's purely local based on more or less infrastructure capacity all the way out to the Wallaston outfall at the beach there. So, what we did was we took like the stormwater management standards. We did perform some geotechnical borings to see what the underlying soil conditions were all the way down to about 40 feet below grade with borings. And then we came back and brought an excavator. We did some additional test pits to get a better idea of what the, closer to the surface soil composition looked like. We identified groundwater elevations that were about seven, eight feet down from the existing grade, basically sloping to the rear of the lot. So, as I had mentioned earlier, in the rear of the lot, the site falls about seven, eight feet from the street grade to the low point in the back of the site. So, right now, there's just a drywall there. It doesn't really work. It floods whenever there's rain, you know, it just stays wet for prolonged period. It builds up and it just eventually drains away, but it takes a long time. So, as part of the project, we took a look at what's that existing flood storage capacity that's being provided today. So, worst-case scenario, if the flood builds up to elevation 14, which is roughly half of the property, theoretically, there could be water there based on the study that the city's peer review consultant identified. So, we designed the project with a system of infiltration chambers below the garage. So, the building was actually designed so that it goes down half a grade, but even going down half a grade, the lower level is still higher than the adjacent grade. So, on the back edge of the property, essentially the street grade roughly 18, in the back, we're at about 11, 10 in the back of the property. So, it slopes down along the edges. So, the building essentially appears to be a little taller as the grain falls from the garage base level. The garage elevation was at roughly elevation 13, a little bit more than 13. So, we have about three, four feet exposed at the back of the building below the garage level. So, there's a system of stormwater pipes that are underneath that garage as well as stone that will allow the water from a flood perspective to enter into the building and be stored below the building and also to allow it to essentially recharge back into the ground. And during a rainfall event, the roof leaders from the building will be connected to that same system and there'll be backflows that prevent it from discharging out into the environment and everything's recharged back into the ground. So, it really serves two purposes. It provides additional flood storage to match what's there today so we don't increase the burden on adjacent properties. And we also provide an improvement from reducing any of the stormwater outfall from the actual site itself when it's raining, but there might not be a flood condition. So, we designed that and revised it based on the comments that we had from the peer review consultant and they're currently finalizing their review. We hope to have that finalized with the next planning board meeting that we have in front of them. So, there was a big focus on the stormwater management design, working very closely with Woodard and Curran and their engineering team to come up with a solution that worked not only for the site, but for the neighborhood as a whole. And in addition to the system that we have behind the building and below the building, we also have recharge chambers that collect the runoff from trench drains as we slope down into the garage as well as trench drains as we slope away from the garage to the street. So, you don't have any runoff going across the sidewalk, again, containing that so we don't have any pedestrian housing problems for people that are walking on that. From a utility standpoint, it's fairly standard for a lot of these urban projects for the garage again, oil-water separators that treat the stormwater management, or treat the sewer system for the floor drains in the garage, new water services for the domestic and the fire service. As mentioned for the other project, between the two of them, we have committed to replacing the water infrastructure along the project frontage in Wentworth as well as repaving the roadway at the request of Department of Public Works. All the new electric and telecommunications services will be underground, so taking the overhead surfaces that provide the services inside, bringing it underground. We have conservatively showed transformers for both buildings based on the National Grid standards, but depending on the overall electric demand, there might be an opportunity for one of them to go away based on how the power is shared between the buildings. We'll work closely with National Grid, but we did want to plan for essentially the more intensive use, so it's only an improvement if we could do away with one of the transformers. So, we have allocated space because that's something that we found sometimes on these projects, all of a sudden, you don't want to be surprised by something all of a sudden that shows up on a prominent corner that wasn't planned for. So, we're planning for those and if we can value it, we can do it now based on the National Grid requirements, but I think it just helps improve the project down the road. And that really talks about the improvements from a site standpoint. Happy to get any certain questions if you have any.
That's our presentation.
Guys, do you have a question for now?
I'm good for now.
Those who want to speak in favor, first call. Second call. Third call. Call that part of the hearing closed and correspondents. These will be put into the record and required to be adhered to. It's another book, which will get cut way down with the planning department. Anyone who is opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call. Second call.
Martha Bridge, 121 Clay Street, traffic. The traffic issue. I don't know if they go together on these two, but they seem to be separate.
They would, they would take them into impact when they're, when they're in front of planning for both of them.
I love the idea of a right turn only from Wentworth to Hancock. That's a great idea. Maybe a right turn only from Wentworth coming, you know, onto Clay or, I don't know, something, but traffic's a concern.
Sure. Yeah, it's, you know, two, two bigger projects and all at one impact is definitely going to be some impact.
We need road remediation too.
There's no building.
From a traffic.
Neil, 72 South Bayfield. I'm mostly for this one. I was seeing if they could somehow modify the elevator lobby and get that drop-off like they have on the other project. Seems to be enough room between the two driveways just because there's traffic and a lot of Amazon trucks.
Involves another curb cut too though. You'd have.
You can go driveway to driveway.
Yeah, you'd have driveway to driveway, right?
It would be challenging.
Did you look at anything like that?
You did. It's very challenging. If you have parking, national, I mean, all the, all the, both projects, their parking meets all the design criteria by law. So, to do that, I mean, it just ended up approaching too much forward to get a drop-off there. It's unfortunate.
And there's anticipation that we're going to have continued discussions and cooperation with the church so that the area of the church parking lot could be, could accommodate the ability to pull a truck over and unload and bring it across the street. It's not ideal, but certainly cooperation even between the parties that own, you know, this site and the site across the street where there is a drop-off area. But we'll have those continued conversations.
It's also further back from the main, from the intersection of Hancock Street. You know, I mean, I think it probably has less of an impact there and we all know, we see these Amazon, they learn their route and they park where.
And the chances are they'll be able to pull into the driveway, you know, they'll take, pull into the driveway, stop, make their delivery and pull.
Yeah, I mean, they park where, they find their fastest routes. Everybody.
But it's.
It'd be, it'd be nice. I mean, we've seen it on a couple of projects. It is nice. It is a nice feature. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Third call. Call that part of the hearing closed. Again, I think, I think it's a transformation of an area. I think it's a good start to what, you know, the plans are for Wallaston. I don't know if you guys have ever reviewed the Wallaston urban redevelopment project. It's a, it's a pretty comprehensive plan and I think you did a modest interpretation of what is, you know, the general take on what they're going to do or what they want to do with, in terms of building heights and first-floor occupants and, you know, market tile and stuff, which I don't think it would really survive where it is here. Hopefully, somebody cleans up that 7-Eleven.
It'd be nice if it went away.
Yes, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be upset. Any comments, Tom?
I've no comments. I, you know, it's, it's a blank slate and it's kind of a no-frills building.
Yeah, it's going to be better than it was there now and I think it's a good design.
I concur.
Shall we? Yes, sir.
ZBA-23-62, The Marion Group LLC, for variance to construct a new four-story, 27-unit residential building on the premise number 13 Wentworth Road, Quincy, and make a motion to accept the incentive.
Second. All's in favor? All right, Matt opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much. Good time.
Thank you, gentlemen. We will send that suggestion in.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown. Martha. Mrs. Brown.
Good luck.
We should send a note into the council. No, 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 I just, you know, it's something that they should definitely consider. Charlie made a really good point. You'll get back traffic up there. Anybody who's ever trying to take a left there, you sit there because you have to wait for the light to change.
And then you, you've got two lanes of traffic there and you're fighting there too. Because of stop lines right there.
So, we'll send a note into T F A to make the suggestion. Last but not least, we're going to have you send flowers or something to ZBA 2364, Cloud Nine Cannabis LLC, for a special permit and variance to open and operate a recreational marijuana dispensary business on the premise numbered 15 Liberty Street, Quincy. The applicant that are representing you there.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your service. First of all, I know these are long nights. I appreciate that. On behalf of the residents, I'm going to basically just introduce everybody tonight and then sit down and let others take over. First of all, I want to introduce the property owners, Stephen Fairley. He's a longtime business owner in the city of Quincy, 72 years. I think he, he told me he owns property down by the site. His business is down by the site. It's been there. It's a family business. It's been there for decades, actually. Claudia Sala is here as the engineer. David Lang is here, who's the manager and actually a licensed pharmacist by trade and he's the manager, will be the manager of Cloud Nine Cannabis. I also have Phil Silverman, who's an attorney with Vicenza Law in Boston. Vicenza Law is a lawyer that deals solely with the marijuana industry, the cannabis industry. He's been utilized not just for his legal prowess, but his, his advice in terms of the technical aspects of the, of the industry as a whole. So, I'm going to introduce Phil and let him take it from there. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. I'm just going to give you a handout if I could.
Sure, counsel. Absolutely. You can just hand it to me and I'll pass it back.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. I'm Phil Silverman. I'm here for Cloud Nine Cannabis, which is going to be doing business as Pinnacle Cannabis. We're seeking a special permit to operate a retail marijuana establishment, 15 Liberty Street pursuant to section 6.11 of the zoning ordinance. If you're familiar with it, this property is currently an auto repair shop. I don't know if you've had a chance to go by. If you do, you'll see in its current state is, it's not a particularly attractive property. There's cars all over the place. It's, you know, the garage doors are open. It's, you know, it's, it's something of an eyesore if I can be blunt. And this, the whole project here is designed to clean up that site, present a welcoming environment for customers, again, over the age of 21 where they can purchase marijuana and marijuana products. We're going to be seeking variances from a variety of setbacks. The marijuana ordinance requires a 1,500-foot setback from residential districts, 500-foot setback from, among other things, public parks and properties which are housing liquor licenses, as well as a variance to allow for two illuminated signs on the building. So, again, just to sort of reiterate, so you know, my background, I work for a national law firm. We specialize in marijuana businesses and we assist these clients in setting them up and ensuring that they remain compliant with your local ordinances and also with state law. We represent about 100 clients in Massachusetts and we've permitted over 100 projects in Massachusetts. We really think this is an excellent site for this type of a use and of course, we look forward to working with the city. David Lang is here. He is one of the principals of the company. He's a licensed pharmacist. Now, this is not technically a medical dispensary, but we would note that really the most challenging aspects of running a retail marijuana dispensary aren't really the retail aspect. You know, retail is not the most complicated type of business to run. What's complicated about these types of businesses is compliance. There are protocols required by the state in terms of dispensing, managing inventory, all sorts of procedures for access to the facility. That's what a pharmacist does and, and so we think he's sort of ideally suited to be managing this facility. Just sort of moving through page four of your handout, it's a 2,611 square foot building. Again, this is going to be totally updated. You can get a picture of sort of what's going on at the facility right now. I drove by today. I think there were 22 cars on the lot today. It's, you know, I'm sure creates, anytime you have probably more than one car moving around that site, I suspect that it creates problems out onto the street. This will be significantly streamlined operation here with the way this operates. We are in the industrial A district as you can see on sheet five. It's accessible by car and public transport, but the reality of this is most of the people that are going to be frequent, frequenting this are really local in the neighborhood here, not like a few years ago, people who were literally driving from across the state to get to the few dispensaries that are open. Those days are gone. We've got about 250 retail dispensaries in Massachusetts now. So, the traffic and those sorts of things, you just don't see that anymore. So, I think you'll see, you know, probably a lot of walk-up customers. Some people will drive, but it really is more like a local neighborhood liquor store or a pharmacy in terms of your patronage. And the site, just to go through a couple of details, page six on your handout, has to be more than 500 feet from any schools. That's, that's the buffer under state law. It's also a buffer under your locals zoning ordinance. And on the local level, we are looking for some relief. This, this site is non-conforming in its present state. There are issues with the rear setback not being, you know, what would be required under zoning, one of the side setbacks, same thing. So, section 3.4.2 of your zoning ordinance allows by special permit a change of one non-conforming use to another provided that the use is no more detrimental to the surrounding area. And I would suggest to you that getting all of these cars off the lot, cleaning it up and making it sort of a streamlined operation is really quite a benefit to the neighborhood. So, beyond that, there are buffers also for the marijuana use in section 6.11, 1,500 feet from residential district, we need a variance from that. Reality here, I think, is that it's. Reality here, I think, is that it's very difficult to locate a dispensary within this city with that fifteen-hundred-foot buffer from a residential district. Um, and, and this, this property actually, uh, compared to most places that you might have this, is, is actually pretty good in terms of some natural barriers. The rear of the building backs up against commercial uses. Um, uh, the, uh, now, there are residences not that far from the property, but it is kind of a, a barrier from the streets, Water Street and Liberty Street. Uh, you can sort of see those on there, and also create a bit of a barrier from the neighborhood there. So we think this is the highest, best use of this parcel. Uh, most other uses would not work here, uh, to be quite frank, frank. So, uh, if this isn't allowed, I think it's a, it's a real hardship. I'm also, um, understand from Mr. Sala, who's gonna talk, that, um, what happened here, and the reason the lot is what it is, is there were several takings, I think some by the city, uh, as well as the state, that put for the roads and, and have really narrowed this lot. And so that sort of adds to the hardship here, I think, for the property owner of trying to, trying to cite a business on this lot. So without further ado, I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Sala come on up and sort of walk you through the site and how everything will look.
Good evening, Claudia Sala with DeSelberg Sala Associates, twelve sixty-six Furness Brook Parkway, Quincy. Basically, we have a nine-thousand-square-foot parcel, uh, exactly, ninety-five, hundred-ninety-square-foot parcel, uh, which has a present, uh, auto repair shop, and the rest of the parcel is basically paved. And as the attorney said, there's typically twenty-one to twenty-two vehicles on the site at any given time. The, the only thing we really looked at is new park, didn't propose parking for the site. We came up with basically nine spaces that are comfortably maneuverable. Uh, the aisle width maintains the four, twenty-four-foot width minimum. We have some parallel parking along the sidewalk, uh, which maintains the nine-by-twenty-two with the twenty-two-foot aisle. No, no spaces will be backing out into, uh, the street, so they would all have to turn around and drive out into the street. And we have the two spaces in the rear that are accessed by the driveway that is on the abutting property. There's a driveway here to this parking area, uh, that is actually, there will have two spaces that will be used here. From the abutting property, which is owned by the same owner, I guess, and they are currently, that area is currently used by the gas station to go in, uh, the repair shop to go in and out. They have a, they now have a dumpster enclosure, or sort of an enclosure with, uh, scrap metal storage on the abutting property that would be eliminated. A new dumpster will be brought on to the current lot near the back of the building. And that's pretty much all there is. There'll be no changes to site grading, asphalt building access. If, if there are any other questions that I'm not addressing, feel free.
Only access points from Liberty Street or is Water Street?
There are two, two curb cuts, two curb cuts on Liberty Street.
Okay.
They're sort of evident.
Put nothing on that?
The other curb cut on Water Street is on the abutting property.
Okay.
Owned by the same owner again.
Okay.
And I believe that will be intended to be used for employees, so.
Is there, is there a written recorded easement for those still to cross the property line?
There is not, that I know of. Uh, and I, again, it's the same owner, so.
Yeah, but still.
I would just say, we actually anticipated utilizing two of those, those two parking spaces as employee, uh, parking spaces. So the employees would be there first, and cars, the customers would come and park in front of them. So there would be no need to even access from, from Water Street.
So the owner, the owner of the properties is gonna retain the ownership of the both properties?
Yes, correct.
I would still suggest an easement in there, just to.
Yeah, if, if it's utilized, and not, I'm not usually certain we're gonna be utilizing that curb cut. My understanding was that we're gonna have that for employee parking. Granted, it's tangent parking, but the two employees.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I deal for, for employees. I agree.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
Right.
But I prefer to see an easement in there, okay? It's only a matter of paperwork if it's the same owner, you know, just to.
Right.
Run from one to the other, so.
And then. Yeah, so you have two parking spaces here off of Liberty Street.
The bottom.
The bottom. They're gonna back out onto Liberty Street?
No, no, they, they would just back, they would back out here and drive up and exit this.
Still Liberty Street.
It's still Liberty Street. But they won't back out onto the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, they'll be.
They'll drive out on, on Water Street at this, at that driveway.
Yeah, the access would be from Liberty Street.
Yeah, no.
Water Street.
No spaces will back out onto Liberty Street or Water Street. I don't think you'll have the option. Get busy that corner.
Well, yeah, with the, with the gas station there, it's terrible. It's tough getting in and out of there now.
Yeah, when tow trucks come by, it's.
And, and I don't anticipate a lot of people actually walking to the pod store.
No, no, but, but there are. There are handicap ramps and crosswalks.
I'll bring you the junk. Can you tell us what happens to most consumers? Drive or walk?
It's, uh, it tends to be.
No, no, I was messing with John back here.
Okay.
Professional witness.
Um, there is a floor plan that I provided on page nine of your handout.
Yeah, looks like a decent renovation. Is it?
It is. It is. And I don't wanna, uh, unless you have questions, I, I know you've, uh, permitted these before. There's a standard way that these are done within the state. The, you've got a Sally Court entry, so you, you walk in. It's a vest of you. You can't go any further in until they've checked your ID. Then they buzz you in. You'll actually have your ID checked a second time at the point of sale. You'll leave through the same, uh, same entry and access way. And, uh, then just in terms of just some basics, again, I know you've, you've permitted these before. Twenty-one years of age and older, uh, the product is dispensed in plain, uh, tamper-proof, childproof packaging. All the product is independently tested. Uh, no customers purchase more than an ounce of flour or five grams of concentrated product. In terms of the security, same things you've seen at all the other dispensaries, uh, that you've done. You've got, um, Sally Court, as I mentioned, you've got a vault. All the product goes into a vault at the end of the day, stays there until the next morning where it's taken out. You've got video monitoring, exterior and interior. We can see three-hundred-and-sixty degrees around the building, uh, from the security office. Every place within the facility where marijuana is handled or stored has a camera. There are alarms on all of the doors, all of the windows, and there are panic and duress alarms throughout the facility. We do have onsite security personnel during business hours, and the facility is monitored twenty-four-seven, uh, through off-site monitoring. We also don't market to minors or brand with cartoon characters or products that look like fruit, that sort of thing. And we make it very clear with our employees, you know, dispensing to minors is, uh, going to be met with termination. CCC has absolutely no tolerance for any kind of diversion of this product to minors. Additionally, you should know, uh, again, by Cannabis Control Commission requirements, no product is visible from outside the facility. Um, we also monitor the outside. We're not gonna allow onsite, uh, consumption of this product. When patients, uh, customers come into the facility, we have an education process that goes first, and we explain to them. Take this product, go home. That's where you use it. Don't use it outside. If you do use it outside, we're not gonna allow you back in here, and we're very likely to call the local authorities. We can't have that at this facility for obvious reasons. So, um, that's sort of, uh, the basics of it, and happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Please.
Hey. Um, in terms of deliveries, I see there's only one entrance and out of the front by the parking lot. What time will your deliveries be made, and how is that gonna be handled with security?
So, sure. Um, so what we generally do with that is we use off-hours, okay? And I, I can't tell, it won't be at a specific time. We use random times, um, when we do the deliveries, and random routes for the delivery, people that come, um, you know, or, or when we go out and we pick up product as well. You know, we, we can't have a pattern develop, obviously.
Just like an Amicazza.
And what, what happens here is basically the car is gonna drive up to the front entrance. Again, it's off-hours. We won't have customers there. These, these deliveries are very well coordinated, because you have to sort of have GPS tracking from the people within the facility that know that it's coming, and it's, it's almost like a dance routine. They go out, they get the product. The, the delivery takes about two minutes from start to finish, um, just, just right in through the front door. And our security personnel, uh, are engaged in that as well.
From my own edification, my second question is, uh, in your preventing diversion to minors, minors, uh, literature indicate that the website will require all online visitors to verify that they're twenty-one years of age or older. How does that work?
Uh, well, it's a bit of the honor system. Um, you know, we, we can't check IDs on the, online. No, no business can do that, obviously. So, you know, we, but, but there is a question that says, you know, are you twenty-one years of age? And they have to say yes that or no.
So that is to protect the vendor, not to protect.
Well, I guess, I, 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 that's probably a, a good way to think of it, yeah.
Give me the, uh, dimensions of the signs.
I think it's ten by ten, uh, and twenty by eight.
And you have them both illuminated right now?
Correct. And, um, I know illuminated signs, I, I think your zoning allows it pretty, pretty late, actually. Cannabis Control Commission, you actually can't have an illuminated sign beyond a half hour before sundown. So we'll have to turn it off, uh, at that time.
The hours of operation?
All illuminated. I'm trying to look up the illuminated.
How about your hours of operation?
Hours of operation, it's the same that's allowable for, uh, your liquor stores. So I think what that is, uh, is Monday through Saturday, nine to eleven, and Sunday, ten to nine. That's where at. One, six, one, double size, more than double size.
Yeah, both of them over the size.
Too big?
Yeah, so we have a seventy-five square feet sign ordinance, so both of these, with the larger than.
Realize it, right?
Yeah, so you'd have to, we'd have to approve those if we're gonna do this as well.
But we just keep them with, in the regulation?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest. Any knock on that?
That's fine. No, no issues with that.
Only other question, do they, do either of the owners or the applicant, I mean, does either of the applicant have any other, uh, retail stores currently?
Not at this time.
Okay, so this is their first venture?
Correct.
Okay. So I am, I know.
Well, I'm still kinda concerned. Two things, fifteen-hundred feet to a hundred-and-fifteen feet, and the traffic is terrible. I, I, I can't imagine that this is not gonna add to a horrible corner.
So.
You've got a couple of sets of lights. They back up terribly.
Yep.
I get off there to go home every night. It, it's, it's a mess.
I understand. Um, so let me give you some sense, though, you know, your average, uh, number of customers is probably ten an hour at a place like this. Your average visit is anywhere from eight to ten minutes. So you're not gonna fill the parking, um, you know, at, at any given time. So there's room to maneuver here. Um, and quite frankly, I think in terms of the room to maneuver, what you have on there presently, there's no room on there. If you have two cars trying to move about that lot right now, they're not gonna be able to move. If somebody's trying to get in when another car is moving in there, they're stuck out on the street. You're not gonna have that here, because there's enough room in that lot, given the amount of business and how quickly we get people in and out, that I think it's actually less harmful to the traffic than what you probably have there right now.
Based on, uh, you've done this all over the state, and you've seen this happen, and you've also seen the changes from, you know, like you said, driving thousands of mi, a hundred miles to get to a place compared to five miles around the corner. This'll be, uh, you know, third in the city of Quincy, which will show the, that'll pale in comparison in five years. Proximity to, to his concern, proximity to schools and parks and things like that. Have you, uh, I, I mean, I haven't seen the loitering around these places that everybody feared. I've seen it much more of, uh, it almost looks like a closed storefront. You haven't seen, like, people hanging around. I see more people hanging around CVS than I do, you know, a place like this. Is that, has that been your experience?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the fears haven't been realized in that sense.
Yeah.
You know, there was a lot of, uh, you probably saw it on television when this first came out.
Yeah, the first week, everybody loaded up, lines up the doors.
Literally people everywhere east of the Mississippi River. I mean, there were literally people coming from other states wanting to see this. But there's just so many of them now, um, that it's just not.
Yeah, North Hampton became a real big problem.
There, yeah, they were, um, and.
Yeah, they're the boss people.
And, and what's.
They'll have a problem with police someday.
And what's happened is you found that North Hampton is actually, some of the stores are closing, because there's so many of them right now that there's not enough customers at a lot of them. So it's really changed, and in, in the area, you know, there are others in Quincy. So, um, I, I, I don't see that as being an issue. I will say this, what we would be willing to do, and, and I think it makes some sense, is maybe, uh, for the first two weeks, we would have a police detail, um, just to make sure there aren't those types of problems. What, what tends to happen at these places is you get your customers, and once they see how it works, and once they understand the layout and what's expected of them, they get used to it. So, you know, to the extent that you might wanna put a condition on, uh, for, for a couple of weeks, that we have a police detail.
And we approved one at a far busier intersection, and we've heard boo.
Yeah, by the bridge.
Yeah, we've heard boo, you know.
Haven't heard anything from there?
Not a thing, not a word. Not a complaint.
You were over there all the time.
The public park setback, uh, five-hundred feet apart, is, which public park is over there?
It's, it's just a, uh, it's actually a statue.
It's on the water or water.
Technically, a, a park, I would, I would say. It's city-owned. It's just a little corner.
It's on this corner, yeah.
Park that, I don't even know that it has a bench. It's not like a playground or anything. It's, it's a statue.
I think there's one bench.
It, there, it does have a.
I think there's one in the back.
No, no, not at all, not at all. But technically, it does meet the requirements of a city park, I guess.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I mean, um, I, I get, I get the concerns. I just, I haven't seen them validated anywhere, you know, and I just, I.
I'm conflicted. I mean, it's such a rathole now.
Well, that's.
I'd like to see something done with it, but.
I, I was also gonna say, you know, I.
It used to be Omar's about a hundred years ago.
If we do approve it, like, you know, the, the owners are gonna have a challenge in terms of they've had some, they've had some struggles in and around that neighborhood with people hanging around, you know, some bars closed, and, and it's been less, so.
I, I think, you know, uh, what, what has tended to happen, I don't, I don't know that it's a crime area or any of that, but, but crime actually goes down around these places, because the degree of security.
Yeah.
Is so high around these places. And our, my client has a significant interest in making sure that this area in general, doesn't become a problem area, because it's just the easiest way to get shut down is, you know.
I insure a number of cannabis operations, and every time I see one, I love it, because I know security is not my problem. I don't have to worry about that.
It is significant. Massachusetts has the most stringent security in any of the states that legal.
Yeah, they're very, they're very well-qualified. Any other questions right now?
No.
John, anything else right now?
No, I'd ask you, lend money to build a couple.
All right, well, we can have a seat for now. Anyone in favor? First call? Second call?
I'll make a statement.
I was gonna say, would that have been any better?
This is the high building you were talking about earlier, John.
Well, I have frequented, um, a couple marijuana establishments before, so, um, the one good thing about recreational marijuana, um, one of the things the zoning board does do, we talk about the new growth. By you giving zoning variances, you allow the city to collect more property taxes, okay? So the way they did the marijuana law, basically anyone needs to come up here and get a variance, no matter where you do a business. So you have to come up here, and the zoning board has to approve the.
So you have to come up here, and the zoning board has to approve the location. So I worry about, I I think, one, we we need, you know, more. I think this is great, we get 3% of all revenue that goes to that place, we get that directly to the city of Quincy, so, um, this could generate, you know, I I disagree with what the lawyer said, that 10 people, um, um, an hour, you could have 10 people in there in in a minute, okay? Um, if it's a good operation, um, it's gonna be crowded, and sometimes the parking lot will get full, and if the parking lot's full, the people are gonna have to drive to another dispensary. That's what will happen, because there'll be other dispensaries. It's almost like when you go to Dunkin' Donuts and you can't get in because they're backed up on the street, or if you go by Popeyes and you can't go in, you're not gonna go to Popeyes, or you're not gonna go to Dunkin' Donuts. At least this gives people another choice, okay? Um, I do have an issue where most of the places that I go to, um, they have one door, you go in, and another door, you go out. So for security reasons, that's a a much better plan. And, you know, if there's a limited parking lot, there's usually one way in, one way out, with the traffic flow that everyone pays attention to, um, you know, it's hard saying that, um, this business is gonna make traffic worse down there, because, you know, the traffic that comes out of that BJ's gas station is just crazy, okay? So, um, you know, but it's gonna be similar to to that at various given times. It depends on the operator. If the operator, like, I was surprised that the one down at Shipyard, um, I didn't think they were gonna do, um, enough business. So the the market has changed, and being a recreational business and not doing medical is actually, um, an advantage. So, um, they don't have any places in Braintree. Uh, I expect people from Braintree to be coming here, uh, Weymouth. I mean, most of the people that come to the dispensary, um, they're gonna be coming, I disagree that many people will be walking there, most of the people actually drive their car to dispensary, a lot of people actually don't even have a car, and they have someone else give them a ride, and so there's people waiting in the car in the parking lot, waiting for their friend to get out of the dispensary. Because right now, all you have to do is be 21 to go into a recreational dispensary, you don't need any special ID. And then when you get your receipt, it actually says your name on the receipt. So, I mean, they know who's buying the marijuana, so it's a good resource, um, you know. I just worry about one, I worry about the people who work there, you wanna make it safe for the people who, you know, work there. So we talk about security, it's not about security, um, for the customers, it's the security for the people who work there. Um, you know, one of the interesting things, they say that, um, you know, the Cannabis Control Commission, they have all these rules and stuff, well, when the marijuana goes into the, um, you know, I'm concerned about the safety of the marijuana that's at these facilities, okay? And if it's going into a, um, into a safe at night, well, is that, is that safe? Is the humidity and the temperature at the right, you know? Are you making sure that the marijuana, you know, stays safe? And then in the daytime, when the marijuana gets delivered, it's most likely gonna get delivered in the daytime, too. I mean, it's not like the marijuana guy's gonna come at 3:00 in the morning, um, like, undercover. It's gonna come, you know, during regular business hours. And so, you know, it's, you know, I'm familiar with the place that I go all the time, Botera in Taunton, um, I routinely see the guy that's checking IDs, he's also putting labels on the stuff that comes in, they they multitask these employees, so a good thing to be, I can guarantee you this, it's gonna be a lot of people that live around the Lincoln Hancock, um, you know, area around that that place that would love to work here. So if they hire people that live in the neighborhood, they could walk there and they won't have a car, that would be a benefit. So, I mean, the goal is to have people who are from Quincy who are working there. So this is gonna create, um, a lot of jobs, it's gonna create revenue, but, you know, it's gonna be a mess for the poor people who drive in and out of that place, but everywhere it is a mess going in. So, I mean, it's hard to get up to Pansia, it's hard to get out, you know, I mean, it's it's a mess, but I am in favor of this, thank you.
I was gonna say, I didn't know if you were in favor or against.
Eventually, it's gonna, eventually it's gonna get there.
Thank you for the education. Uh, anyone else in favor? Second call? Third call? Call that closed? Nice, small. Uh, August 2nd, 2023, we reviewed this middle for the above reference project and have no comments. Easy. Opposed or undecided? I do have a few, uh, letters here. Opposed or undecided, first call? Counselor, do you want to speak before that, or do you want to speak after? You can tell.
I just, I just wanted to say some things that.
Sure.
That you were talking about, and, uh, we had a community meeting also.
Sure.
James Devine, 117 Cross Street. Uh, we had a community meeting. The park across the street is called Abigail Adams Park, by the way, so, just an FYI. Clearly within 500 feet, because it's about 26 feet across the street. Most of the people at the community meeting, uh, their biggest concerns was, uh, traffic. They talked about when it used to be a gas station, it was pretty tough. I don't remember being at a gas station. And then, uh, a few people had concerns about, it's, I know it's much further than 500 feet from schools, but Lincoln Hancock and Delacue is there, and some, a lot of the kids that come from Sterling, they might, the only way to get across is, uh, crossing over, uh, Bergen Parkway to get to 7-Eleven or where they live. So some people were talking about concerns of being exposed to that area. Other than that, that's about all that I heard from constituents, mostly traffic.
Thank you.
My name's Neil, 72 South Mayfield. Uh, I'm for this project, the, whatever's there now is an eyesore, I drive past that corner quite often, there's cars all over the place. I I think the traffic there is kind of a nightmare. If the guy owns the property next door, there should be an outlet onto Water Street, and one onto Liberty with both right turns, um, because you ain't taking a left on the Liberty with all the traffic there. And a way out onto Water Street to go that the other way would be good. So if there's some way to do an easement like you had talked about, where they could scoot out that way, they would make the parking lot flow better, and actually make this.
But they'd lose their parking if they do that?
They would lose a parking spot or something if they make it one way to get out that way.
Right, a couple.
Uh, but they could close up one of the other entrances on Liberty Street and gain some spots back. Something for the engineer to look at, I think it would help with the traffic concerns. But other than that, I am for the project.
Thank you, thank you. Opposed or undecided, second call?
Hello?
Can you come up here, please? Thank you.
Uh, my, my name is Judy, uh, living at, uh, 148 Quincy Street, and, uh, well, first of all, I I found two surprises tonight, and I just wanted to mention it. First, I didn't know there are so many projects of today. I received this letter, says, uh, about this marijuana, uh, establishment, says there's a public hearing at 6 o'clock, so I came here and, uh, I didn't have lunch, uh, dinner yet. So next time.
You don't wait.
Next time, if you plan a meeting with multiple projects, you should, you know, make a list there, so at least we know, and now it's going to be a long meeting, okay? And secondly, uh, surprise, surprise, and even confusion is that I didn't even notice that the, uh, street number is 15 Liberty Street here. Uh, I know that I'm invited here because I'm living nearby, but as I recall, only a few months ago, I think, if not a year, last year or either earlier this year, there was a public, you know, or at least I le- received a similar letter, maybe not from the, uh, city, but from the developer or whatever, mentioning a public hearing in the neighborhood, talking about the marijuana place on, uh, Brook Road that's parallel to, uh, Quincy Street. So I didn't go to that one, and, uh, I thought this is a continuation of that discussion, and so I don't know what happened to it.
True.
It it was already approved, why, uh, another, you know, stuff here? Do you know?
I don't think it's been approved, whatever.
Is that another one?
So, are you the same, you're like, you're failed one?
Oh, that's, okay. No, that's School Street, that's School Street. Where's the other one?
159 Broke.
159 Broke, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't done anything with that one yet.
Oh, okay.
We haven't had a hearing for it yet.
Oh, okay, so, see, this is, so.
This is a completely different proposal.
Okay, okay, so now I understand, just as one of people said there, uh, this is hot, like, everyone wants to have such a, uh, shop there, okay? As a, how do I say this? As a graduate from MIT's Urban Planning Department, uh, I have to say that, uh, if I know this is, you know, 15, uh, Liberty Street, uh, I would, first of all, I would call for a traffic.
Study.
Study, because, uh, as someone there said, this is going to be a nightmare. It is. Uh, I just want to mention two factors there. One is that, even though the street is called 15 Liberty Street, but all the traffic are going to be, or most traffic are going to be generated for the Water Street. The Water Street is already a heavy loaded street. As a new resident here for the past couple of years, uh, I have to say that I haven't seen any street in Boston area, especially in Quincy. It's so narrow, only one lane, and so heavy traffic. I don't even understand why people are all driving on Water Street, and so it's already a heavy loaded traffic one, only one lane, and, uh, and now you add this thing there, it's going to be nightmare. Secondly, someone already mentioned that the big, uh, gas station there, so, uh, my own observation is that that gas station already caused a lot of traffic as usual, but, uh, recently I even observed one, uh, episode. One day when, uh, gasoline price hiked, right? Probably there was some news about, uh, whatever, you know, gasoline's saying, or about, and and people anticipating about a hike, so there's this traffic, this stop there, you know? So that corner is already, you saw people coming from three different directions, parking there, waiting for getting into, not to say getting out of the, uh, gas station. So any future, uh, development in in terms of gasoline, uh, price hike or whatever, congestion with this one, it's going to be doubling.
Yeah.
Nightmare. So I'm seriously saying that you have to think about this traffic impact there, okay? And, uh, lastly, I just want to be honest with you guys, I don't know your, uh, capacity or whatever, you know, official, uh, uh, titles there. Honestly, I wouldn't even come here tonight if not, uh, by accident or whatever, uh, by any chance, I saw a public hearing, uh, news, watched the news, occurred only a couple of days or a few days ago, talking about in Quincy, uh, there's a public hearing, and the mayor showed up to talk or explain about this, uh, project of a refugee center in Quincy. And, uh, when I watched that video, suddenly I felt like, I began to think or suspect, actually suspect, that this administration of Quincy City Hall, uh, seems to me may not be taking public safety, uh, as primary priority, because, uh, maybe that news is not complete, whatever, but what it says there doesn't make sense to me is that it says the mayor came up to explain the importance of, you know, setting up this, or building this refugee center or whatever for the public good or so. But that doesn't make sense in the sense that for projects like this, just like a prison or other, you know, project, for for planning purposes, basically, everyone thinks, oh, not in my backyard, right? So no one would want to welcome or have such an establishment unless there are other sort of benefits or whatever, right? Usually, like, like this one, uh, I heard from news, it's only the second one in the whole state.
Like, we're, we're talking about this specific.
Yeah, I know.
I understand what you're trying to get.
So basically, there's a, there's a cost and, uh, uh, benefit analysis, right? So, so for that one, I don't know what what went on.
Just to let you know that, that's not set, that's not being set up by the city of Quincy, it's set up by a private, uh, institution here, and the city's being asked to kind of absorb it.
Oh.
It's a private.
Oh, yeah, yeah, usually, if the state wanted to do, the state would give you money.
The state is giving a private entity money, the citizens of Quincy are asking, they ask to.
Eastern, right?
Yeah, to take.
Yeah, anyway, so for this one, uh, in in addition to the traffic studies, and I really hope that, you know, uh, people would, you know, look into this, uh, and to, in terms of, uh, not just the traffic, but also public safety. And, uh, to finish this, even on the cost and benefit side, uh, I want to, uh, or make you suggestion, uh, to look at carefully, just not only just think about what he said, 3% of avenue, you know, whatever, the tax, uh, benefit, but what about the, uh, property tax loss if this thing happened there, okay? The property over there, you can project, the property around, or whatever, this area, or even whole, you know, uh, Quincy, could going up a lot, but if we have this one, another one, we have, uh, 12 different establishments like this built up in Quincy, then Quincy as a whole town, its property value could go down or do not increase at all, all right? So 10 or 20 years ago, Quincy was developing, and people were seeing Quincy like, uh, the next Newton or whatever, right? So if if Quincy is still going high like that, that's good news for the city, for the benefit of the revenue, probably bigger than this thing. And if you just look at this and say, oh, great, all these shops here, I get a dozen of them, 20 dozen of them in Quincy, ah, I got that 3%, well, it's short sighted, and you lost your chance to become next Qu- uh, Newton, all right? So you need to do both traffic analysis and cost benefit analysis as well.
Sure.
And on top of that, public safety is another.
We could have said the same thing when we were expanding liquor licenses throughout the the state, you know, like, I mean, it it, I I just, I think, I think, I I appreciate your sentiments, and I think that for a lot of people, it's a big change in terms of what what's happening, but I think, but you you go to the biggest consumers of this product today, and it's not kids, it's 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 40 to 60 year olds. Like, the biggest new consumers of cannabis are 40 to 60 year olds. They're, 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 you're, you know, I I forget where I was just recently, oh, I was at a, I was at a concert, and the guy was talking about his 60 year old wife who is on cannabis every night so that she can sleep. So I think there's this, this common misnomer that that all of a sudden, we're gonna bring like the seeds, uh, the the bad seeds of the world, who are just gonna be high on the streets, and and I I just.
Yeah, we don't know.
I mean, we have, we have two doctors who are who are leading here, they're, they have their doctors, and doctorate, you know, like, you're a highly educated man. You have two doctorates who are setting up this entity. They're not doing it because it's, I mean, obviously, they're doing it because it's a profitable endeavor, but they're also not doing it to attract, you know, the bad seeds of the world.
Well, we, we.
And I'm not here to defend them.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't, I'm just saying, I'm just saying you need at least three concerns, right? Two, two studies needed, and finally, a concern.
I think you're, I think your concern on, in terms of like traffic and parking is absolutely, you know, a viable one. I think that the corner, the intersection stinks, I think the gas station that we put there has inadequate access to it, and I think the gas stations should solve their own problem. I think they should build a different entrance into the gas station, and it would alleviate a ton of the problems. I think there should be an entrance in it, it's too narrow, it's on the corner, they I think there should be an entrance and an exit. It's too narrow, it's on the corner, they can't turn in and out. But that's the same thing that's gonna happen with a business. If a business all of a sudden has twenty parking spots and they're being utilized, guess what they're gonna do? They're gonna go talk to their landlord and they're gonna find a way to get more parking during the day, you know? I mean, the goalpost is busy afternoon.
I almost forgot to mention, there is actually another project we currently hold on to. You know that there's a construction going on last year or earlier this year, but.
Yeah, it's on hold right now.
Yeah, it's on hold. So if that's complete, that, again, traffic.
Thirty, yeah, thirty-two units, another thirty-two there, another three hundred and fifty of them. Yeah, it has them.
Can I just?
Yeah, we don't, it's, you're, I'll say, Counselor, did you guys do any traffic study?
No, Phil is very familiar with the traffic patterns, the number of cars, average, as well as the common.
Would you guys be more comfortable if we got a traffic study? I think, I just think that the board would be more comfortable if we had a traffic study, just to look at it.
That's what the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think John, John Dwyer and I, I think that's, you know, obviously the biggest concern for him. So I think that would probably be beneficial to all of us just to see, you know, what type of, what type of trip traffic we'd be looking at. Even if, even, I mean, do we need a super, like, are you looking to have a, some, a traffic engineer peer review? Are you looking to get more trip transit, what these retail stores look like?
No.
What do you want? Yeah, you want, you want a full report?
I would say this, in terms of the business that's currently there, I know he's taken a little bit of a hit, but actually a great business person that's completely outgrown the site. The traffic that comes and goes from that site already and the cars that park on that site, he's so good at what he does that he's completely outgrown it. Life's gonna be going elsewhere. This is, this is significantly less impactful to that corner than the existing business that's been there for years. To the extent that traffic is an issue, it really, if you, you know the number of cars based on the, in the industry.
I think there's a number.
Well, you're right. Two things happened there. The city and the state took a big chunk of the property.
Right.
By eminent domain, and then BJ's Gas went in.
Right.
Exasperated. So as I said, I get off that exit every night.
Yeah. Which, which is gonna be, it, that area is difficult because of BJ's, because of the location of the entrance. And I get, I get my gas there occasionally as well.
There's only two gas stations in Quincy. You gotta go to one.
You know, but, but it's the location of the, of the entrance. To the extent that this is gonna impact that traffic significantly, it's actually gonna improve it based on the current condition.
Well, that's what the traffic is in there with. I think you would just be more comfortable with it. And that's, that's why I just, if we, how long do you think it would take to get something?
Not long. I mean, I think, actually, I can, I did speak with somebody and I think I could probably put that together as quick as, you know, you need it.
Great. So when that's meeting's on the twelfth, is that too tight?
September twelfth?
September twelfth?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Why don't we put it on for the twelfth? If, if you still don't have something, you know, that, you know, we can, we can move it up? I mean, we can move, push it back to the twenty-second, I think it's, or the twenty-fourth.
The numbers there should be.
Twenty-six, yes.
At fourteen, Ryan.
I'm sorry.
The numbers should be recent there because they just put that left turn in lane coming over the bridge. So the counts in there should be recent.
Should be recent. Yeah, I'll make sure they are. Yeah, no, he hasn't done.
But I'm saying, you won't have to do, I don't think they'll have to do a count. They'll just be able to use the.
Take it back off what's existing there.
A quick follow. Are you talking about?
You can ask through, through us if you have a question. You could ask through us if you have a question.
I was here, I heard he's saying something about current business there. I just wanted to confirm. Is that referring to a mechanic?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what he's referring to, but it's okay. It's, we understand what you, the traffic study is what we're looking for.
Yeah, but I'm just.
I understand, I understand what you're gonna say.
The car business is completely different.
I get it. I get it. Yeah, we know.
They don't park there. They just go there.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just feel if you could just get us that, Counselor, we'd be, we'd be in a better position to make a more educated opinion on it.
Wanna make the motion continue?
Yeah, just, we'll go to the twelfth.
Okay, ZBA dash twenty-three dash twenty-four, fifteen Liberty Street, South Quincy, proposed recreational marijuana store is continuing to September twelfth. Sorry, second. All of them favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
ZBA twenty-three dash forty-six, is twenty-three dash forty-six here? Jason Cole? No. So can I make a motion to move that to, what, nine twenty-six?
Make a motion to move ZBA, what is it?
Twenty-three dash forty-six.
Forty-six, the move to September?
What, twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to dismiss? Second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. See ya.